All right, everybody. We're going to reconvene in open session from our earlier adjourned meeting with the announcement from our city attorney, Quin Barrow.
Thank you, Mayor. Earlier this evening, the city council went into closed session to discuss anticipated litigation pursuant to the Brown Act, and the city council gave direction to the city attorney.
Got it. With that, the city council adjourned regular meeting is now adjourned. We're going to roll into our regular city council meeting for Tuesday, July 18, 2023, and we'll call the meeting into order with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Bella Jacobson. She'll come down here, and we're going to start from there. There we go. We'll follow your instructions.
Okay. Okay. Put your right hand over your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated.
None. So in all transparency, this is my niece Bella. Full transparency. Hold, you guys ain't going anywhere yet. Do you want to point out? You want to point out who's here with you today?
That's my mom, and that's my dad.
Look at that. Three things. First, the city pen.
Thank you.
If you had it just your little girl. This here, the city council, City of Manhattan Beach, does she ever recognize Bella Jacobson for leading the city council and the community in the Pledge of Allegiance dated the 18th day of July, 2023? Put that in front of you.
Thank you.
And today's Bring Your Niece to Work Day. And Dunkin' Donuts made sure she didn't go empty-handed and said, you get a pick of whatever donut you want.
Oh, my gosh.
Or you can pass and have me bring one later to you. Your choice.
I'll have one later.
She says bring one later.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you very much. Wait, we need a team picture. Where is everybody? We'll do a team picture while we're here.
All right.
You want the parents or Sam's parents?
You want cousins, nephews, nieces?
Right here. Hawaiian's on the inside.
You want to be closer?
Here, Mom.
Brad, you want to be on the side?
I've got the message, haven't I?
All right, we're going to look toward Allen Wright in the center.
Yay Bella, everybody say Bella.
All right, Bella.
Stella. All right. Congratulations. All right. Thanks for coming, you guys.
Come anytime.
She did say, oh, by the way, I'll tape it for announcements. And I'll do it now?
Yeah.
Thank you. So what we do in every single meeting, we started this with the, Frank and I started this, this new process, we recognize all the veterans that we have here at our meetings right after our Pledge of Allegiance and ask anyone that's active military or veterans to stand, to be recognized here. And oh no, it's summertime, a lot of people aren't here. But we want to thank them with their service, and if you're watching at home, thank you for your service. We recognize every meeting that we have, and we continue this going forward. So thank you, those of you that are at home watching. With that, we'll do a roll call, please.
Councilmember Holworth?
Here.
Councilmember Lesser?
Here.
Councilmember Napolitano?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Franklin?
Here.
Mayor Montgomery?
I am here as well. Thank you. Nothing on ceremonial. We'll move to item A, approval of agenda and waiver of forwarding of ordinances, but I will say very first, we'll continue item number 12 to a later date. And Councilmember Lesser?
Would you like to pull number four, please?
Item number four, consideration of resolution approving an amendment related to St. Manhattan Beach Unified School District regarding use and maintenance of school district fields. All right, item number four is pulled. Anyone else?
Number six, your honor.
Councilperson Napolitano, item number six, consideration of a resolution adopting the entire urban forest master plan. All right, item six. Anyone else? Anyone else? Yes.
Just to also announce that item number one on discussing electric e-bike safety has been postponed to the August 1st meeting as well.
Item number one, discussion of electric bike safety is postponed until August 1st?
Correct.
All right, so we need a motion with the exception of item one, item number four, and item number six. First, by Mayor Tim Franklin, and second, by Councilmember Lesser. Vote guide, please.
Sorry, let's do that motion again because there's a...
All right, so you guys make your motions and second again.
It's, that was a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
As amended, yes. Same maker, Mayor Tim Franklin, same second, Councilmember Lesser, and now vote, please.
Motion passes five zero.
All right. Item app, city council and community organization announcements about upcoming events. One minute per person. Please come to the dais and speak. Anyone here in person to make an announcement?
Honorable mayor, distinguished members of the council, my name's Michael Hudek. I am a recreation supervisor here at the City of Manhattan Beach, and I want to make a community announcement about our upcoming Manhattan Beach Open Tennis Tournament. We have two hundred, over 200 players who are anxiously waiting to fight it out to the bitter end, starting this Thursday, and they'll be playing at our Livoke and Miracosta Tennis Courts, culminating with our finals at the Manhattan Country Club. All locations are free to the public, including the country club on Sunday, so we invite out the community, and root on your fellow Manhattan Beachians and all those others that are out there competing as well. So we're really excited for it. So come on out. Thank you.
I'd like to meet you. So, Michael, I have one question that was sent to me today. Is Parks and Recs filming the NBA Open Tournament? Question mark.
Not to my knowledge.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Honorable mayor, esteemed members of the city council, I'm Eric Brinkman, your cultural arts supervisor, and I'm here to announce a couple of forthcoming events. Firstly, we are delighted to announce the return of Shakespeare by the Sea to Poliwog Park this Thursday, July 20th. We will be presenting Twelfth Night, followed by Hamlet on Friday, July 21st. Both events are open to the public and completely free of charge. The performances will take place from 7:00 PM to 9:30 PM. We encourage everybody to arrive early to secure a spot. Additionally, on Friday, July 28th, we will be hosting an opening reception at the Manhattan Beach Arts Center from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM in celebration of our sixth annual community exhibition. This exhibition features the artistic talents within the community, featuring over 80 unique artworks. Join us for an evening of light refreshments and beverages as we come together to appreciate the creativity that thrives within Manhattan Beach. This exhibition will run until October 8th. We hope to see everybody at the events. Thanks.
Yes, to be, yes, question, I'm sorry, hold on.
Yeah, can I just have a quick question? Are the actors from Manhattan Beach and all around the South Bay?
The troupe, I believe, hails from Long Beach, but they, they come from all over.
Really? Okay.
To be or not to be, speaking of which...
Well, thank you so much. I don't need to use all of my one, I am Dancy Nelson from Hermosa Beach. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council staff. I'm a board member for Shakespeare by the Sea. It's its 26th season, offering free Shakespeare, and I'll tell you, Manhattan Beach was one of the first five cities, along with Hermosa Beach, in the second year of those 26 years to host Shakespeare by the Sea. Pre-COVID, we were going to 26, 22 cities all around the South Bay. No performances for the two years, but then we were back last year, and I can tell you, we had our performances in Valley Park last Wednesday and Thursday night with 600 people there for Twelfth Night on Wednesday night, and 800 people there for Hamlet on Thursday. As was said, it's in your wonderful Poliwog Park this Thursday and Friday, with Twelfth Night on Thursday and Hamlet on Friday, both performances at 7:00. I want to thank the city of Manhattan Beach, because for two years in a row, you have generously, financially supported Shakespeare by the Sea, and not every city does that. We wouldn't be able to present it for your residents and for everyone who comes if it weren't for that support. It's always free, but it isn't free to produce, so if anyone wants to help out, come on out, buy some swag, and you can also visit shakespearebythec dot org and make a contribution. Hope to see all of you there.
Thank you, Dancy. It's great. Definitely worth your time.
Yeah.
Good evening. I'm Melissa McCollum, also with the Parks and Rec Department, and I'm here to invite the community to a Juneteenth listening session on Saturday, July 22nd, at 10:30 in the morning. It's going to be a great opportunity to learn more about the history and significance of Juneteenth, as well as for community members to share their ideas for community acknowledgement and celebration of Juneteenth in 2024. There will be music and refreshments in addition to conversation for those in attendance. If you're not able to attend, we do invite you to provide input on our online survey, which is available at www dot manhattanbeach dot gov slash survey. So thanks so much, and hope to see you Saturday.
Yes.
Where is it, at 10:30?
At the Manhattan Beach Library, in the community room.
Okay.
You good?
I got it.
Thank you, Melissa. Appreciate it.
Sorry.
Anyone else, public comments? Sure, come on down. I didn't see Josh, and I'm thinking you're here for the library. Just, just a wild guess.
It's hard to say whether or isn't it, what's a fascinating...
Good evening, mayor, and members of the council. My name is Jennifer Oyama, and I'm here on behalf of Manhattan Beach Library. Tomorrow, Wednesday, July 19th, children ages three to five and their parent or caregiver are invited to join us for an engaging, fun, and magical time with magician Zany Zoe. Stay through to the end and learn an easy magic trick using household items. On Saturday, July 22nd, from 1:00 to 2:00, adults are welcome to come to the library and participate in our Vietnamese street food cooking demonstration. Enjoy a delicious demonstration by chef Vivian Phung, the chef with no country, as she shows you to blend Vietnamese cuisine and Los Angeles, Los Angeles street food culture to create a tasty complimentary blend of both. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jennifer. Appreciate it. Come more often. Anybody here else has a public comment?
Yeah.
See anybody else? All right, we'll go to Zoom for public comments. All right. Anyone, council, any comments?
For upcoming events?
Upcoming events, community announcements. Martha, I think I've got a couple of them.
The, the bike race?
You can announce that if you'd like to.
I don't remember the details.
Mr. Franklin's got an announcement first.
Yeah, the Chevron Grand Prix Criterion is going to be on Sunday. It starts, I believe, around 10:00, 9:00 or 10:00. If you go online, I don't have the website, but if you look in the Beach Reporter and Easy Reader, there's full-page ads, and they have kids rides, which are just a lot of fun, and there's a, there's actually a mile run, I think, a mile race too, by some of the older, older kids, and then the, the big kids on the bikes are out there, and if you've never seen it, it's really quite exciting. This is high caliber road racing, very competitive racing, and it's down Valley Ardmore, they go around the whole circle there, so if you head down to Jocelyn Center on Sunday morning, I would say about 9:00, and there's booths, and the vendors give out nice little prizes and food and things like that, so it's a great event. We're not going to forget.
Is there going to be an e-bike race with no helmets?
Yes. Yes, they're looking for you to be the judge.
I'll judge. Yeah. I will judge from afar.
We'll bring the announcement back to August, or maybe Chevron will send a rep to talk about the bike race.
Well, it's, it's this, it's this coming Sunday.
Darn.
I'm sorry.
That's why I brought it up.
So maybe we can send a blast out there to people in our system, remind them about the Chevron Bike Race.
The neighbors know.
Yeah, because it'll impact traffic.
Yeah. And those prizes, we didn't hear about it, so we can blast out, remind them all that we have a bike race coming up.
It's a great idea.
The Chevron Bike Race. Or we'll do a formerly known as Dixel, Alert South Bay, that there's a bike race, no one's going to see a prize for the bike race. So we'll notify them.
Mr. Mayor, it's too bad we don't know anybody from Chevron and their public affairs who would come and announce to us. Jiminy.
They can call the toll-free number, Chevron.
They sent us an email, by the way.
And Martha, I'll put mine posted back up there. I know other comments. So the mayor with the coffees have become more interesting every time. The next one, July 25th, at Coffee Bean and Tea Leaf in Manhattan Village, 3:30 to 4:30, usually much longer than that, but it's a good thing. That one's good, and our next item up. Past that would be coming up. There it is. Yes, I know we have some sales for August 1st. Those of you with children born in Manhattan Beach 2020 and forward, let our city clerk Lisa Tamburino or assistant clerk Martha Alvarez that you have a baby to be the very rare, collectible Manhattan Beach passports there. Oh, we have one of the twins there, that's right.
Wow.
And we got a few.
Aww.
So we'll do some more on August 1st, you'll see that. Any else pass that, Martha, that you've got? And we're good? All right, we're going to move to, thank you, we'll move to item G, and these folks are our regular public comment, three minutes per person on any item not on the agenda. If you're not on the agenda, you can speak, if it's on the agenda, you will not be able to speak on it at the regular time and posting. So your choice, to speak now, or when your item comes up, your choice. With that, the public comments, please come speak here at the dais. Thank you, sir, and your choice of attire.
I know. Part of the theme.
You didn't have flip-flops, someone said.
No, we don't. I'm only halfway there.
Come on, you're only halfway there, exactly right. Actually, I'm here speaking for someone else.
Okay.
Back in November, I had somebody knock on my door, opened it, and it was my next-door neighbor, Connie Maloney, and she asked if I would take the top off, I think she was holding. I said, well, that's weird. Where's Kevin? And then I realized, she, both her arms were encased from her knuckles up here. I said, Connie, what happened to you? Yeah, I took the, I took the top off, but now I understood why she knocked on my door. Her husband wasn't home. I said, well, what happened to you? And Connie was, no, seventy, she's a seven-year-old woman, very vigorous, and she walks the streets of Manhattan Beach as part of her exercise. She's coming down 11th Street from Ocean Drive down to the Strand, and that's the last thing she remembers until she woke up in the emergency room, I think it was that, well, Mary, whatever that is.
Okay, Mary.
Well, and so she was in a bad way, and she had been hit by, hit by somebody on an e-bike, e-bike. So she was a long time recovered, but, and I was, I convinced her to come down here and talk to the group here about it, and in the room next to her was the guy that hit her, and he was seriously damaged too. So I just wanted to emphasize that just, bikes can be dangerous, just, not just on the road, but coming down these, I don't, I don't know how to control these things. I know you can't see this, but this is just a photograph, and you might consider, this is just a photograph I took this morning, the very first time of, this is like seven and nine-year-olds. So my wife stopped and talked to them, and, well, they're from Paris. You know, we get, we get a lot of people from out of the country and might, might be clueless about what the intersection at 15th Street and Ocean Drive is like, and these guys were just crazy, driving in, on these little bikes. And now, that's my public comment, and unfortunately, Connie passed away in her memorial services this weekend, so she can't be here to talk about it. So, thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, let us know. Appreciate that.
All right.
And just so you know, we do have heavy enforcement from our police to e-bikes, and Mayor Tim Franklin taking it upon himself, and thank you for doing that, to push this even more on e-bike safety. So no, we haven't forgotten. We've got a heavy, heavy push. I think you're right, a lot of it, unless we have signs posted in every language in the world, we are tourist destination from everywhere. And I think until we have, you know, people, languages, and outreach to everyone, the best we can, we're going to have incidents happen, unfortunately, like this one. But I think we'll do more and more, and we're doing more and more since we first heard about it, and asking for state help now to recognize, there shouldn't be eight- and nine-year-olds renting or having an e-bike without helmets. Makes, I mean, it's better with a helmet, but I mean, so we're working on, thank you very much, letting us know. Any questions, you can reach Jay Franklin at manhattanbeach.gov. He's an expert on e-bikes, and he's the one you want to talk to. But thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Franklin, thank you for your efforts on e-bike safety, and he, Councilmember Franklin has spent quite considerable effort reaching out to bike shops. I know he's reached out to individuals in the public for donations to, to provide helmets for students, et cetera. This is not off my time. Hang on a second. Why I'm here, Mr. Mayor, I just want to remind the public that we have an outdoor dining task force, and we are looking at the future of Manhattan Beach, and is it just restaurants? Do we want a food court? Do we want to help retail establishments? There's, there's a lot at stake, and, and what's interesting for me is, as a local resident here downtown, y'all know me, there was so much interest, and everybody at your jobs are, you're having to balance all of this, and yet, at the last outdoor dining task force, we had four people, I think, and your community development department, head by Talene, Talene, I don't want to say your last name, but I don't want to butcher it, is doing an absolutely fantastic job on balancing all of this. We are in a very, in my mind, just, we're in the fork of the road of, what are we going to do? How is this going to work? Do we, do we want to take up public roadway? Do we want to widen sidewalks? There's, there's a whole host of ideas, and yet, everybody who voices opinion and the thousands of emails on save, outdoor dining, all this stuff, where are these people? And, and your community development department and city manager Mo and his staff have done a fantastic job. I'm flying up to Capitola tomorrow to look at some of the examples that they have given us to, on what we can do to help Manhattan Beach be a better city, but where are all these people? And it's, I, I, I'm just asking the public, whoever's listening somewhere, please come, and as a resident downtown, we're, I'm open to ideas, whatever we, we're going to do, but let's somehow collectively come up with a consciousness that makes sense for us. And I know y'all appointed me as a downtown resident, I am extremely grateful, but I would like other people to come in and let's hear their voices also. Kudos to the community development department, and the amount of work that they are doing to give us information has been phenomenal, but you're looking for answers, and they can't give you answers if we don't participate as members of the public, and I just would ask my colleagues and residents in the city to, to come and participate. Thank you for your time.
Unfortunately, to that point, people are in, it's okay, I'm just speaking. Unfortunately, not everybody pays attention until they wake up, council meeting, they decide, that's number one, whether they're all in Paris this time of the week.
What's wrong with that?
France, not Texas. But we don't know. And Talene's done a great job, I agree, it's not the fact that we have done outreach, all of us have seen the outreach, but you can't make someone attend meetings. We tried. They will not wake up until the week, the council meeting decides, they'll wake up, and they'll show up. Until then, we ask the question, where are you? Like during finance, budget meetings, where are they? They don't show up.
We will hear after the decisions are made.
After the decision's made, they'll come and say, I didn't know about it. No one ever notified me.
Not fair for you.
But we'll, we move on, and email your friends, see if that works, Jim. Yes.
And I just wanted to mention too, I just wanted to thank Mr. Burton, because he was one of those generous donors who donated helmets to the bike safety, e-bike safety program, so my thanks to you, Jim.
Anybody else here on public comment? In person, none? How about on Zoom, Martha? All right, we'll close, council? Nobody? We'll close public comment and move to the consent calendar. I need a motion to approve items two through eight, with the exception of one, four, and six. I have a first by Councilmember Holworth, and a second by Mayor Tim Franklin, and voting screen, please.
Motion passes five zero.
Great. Just so everybody remembers, item one, the police chief, is not available tonight, we're going to continue that, item one on e-bike safety through August 1st meeting. With that, we have item four pulled by Councilmember Lesser.
Yes. Mr. Mayor and council members, I've, I've asked for a brief summary of this item from the Parks and Recreation Director to alert the public about this agreement, this amended and restated agreement with the Manhattan Beach Unified School District regarding the use and maintenance of the school district fields and facilities, because it's important. It's a long-term agreement, involves a considerable sum, and we want to acknowledge the school board members and our council colleagues who helped hash this out along with their respective staff members.
So thank you, honorable mayor, members of the city council. So this joint use agreement does a number of things. First of all, it's just, the ongoing partnership is strong between the city and the school district. It opens up access to additional facilities in the school district, and I'll run through just a few of the highlights. It allows community access to the Miracosta High School Small Gym, two nights per week, as well as the Summer Sunset Basketball League for six weeks throughout the summer months. Use of classroom, classroom space for the city's summer camp programming. We're always looking for additional facilities, so this is a huge win for the community. Continuing ongoing partnerships for field and court usage, which includes coordination for field closures and maintenance. We want those fields pristine, and it's a well-oiled machine working together to set that schedule up. Provides permits for city employees, children to attend the school district, Manhattan Beach Unified School District. And then overall communications are improved, protocols to discuss ongoing capital projects, scheduling, operations, and this is a 10-year agreement, so this concludes in June of 2033, and it provides an annual payment to the school district of $895,000 for 23 fiscal year, 2324, and then the annual CPI adjustment cap was revised from $25,000 a year up to $40,000 per year. So those are the highlights.
That's it, that's all I want. Thank you.
Yes, and it also provides a carve-out for a land tenure, a grant deed, for almost a million dollars in grant funds that was necessary, and so they did allow that carve-out to allow 30 years, or, you know, virtually in perpetuity, that that will be the playground space for the community.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. We have council questions, Napolitano?
Thank you, Aaron. Just to point out, this is a, a real, it's monumental in terms of agreement between the school and the city regarding this. You know, before we came back on, they were going year to year, and then we were able to negotiate a six-year contract to get us to here, and now we're doing a 10-year contract. That gives peace of mind to the district, because they're able to plan their budget. As you know, the, the state requires them to have three years projections for their budget. This helps tremendously in that. It helps us certainly, and expands our access to the property and the, the amenities that the public uses on a regular basis. So, and it benefits the district overall, because it provides support for education, and that supports and, and provides benefit for the entire community, so it's a good agreement, and I want to point the finger to staff, though, because they're the ones who led the negotiations and got this done, and they're the ones who worked closely with the school district staff to make it happen, and I appreciate all their hard work on this. Thank you, Aaron.
Well said. Thank you. Councilmember Holworth?
Yes, thank you, your honor, and I, I did make a motion to approve this, and as Councilmember Napolitano said, staff really did the heavy lifting on this, both from the school district and our own city staff.
Hey, hey. Yeah, yeah.
Subcommittee. Subcommittee, ad hoc.
I'm on the ad hoc. So, okay, you want to talk? Six years ago? No, 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 wait. No, wait. This is, this is actually a point. My point was going to be, I'm super proud, because six years ago, I was on the council and made this happen, and actually brought this joint use agreement to this community, because prior to me getting involved, it was a dollar a year to the school district. So, okay, good work, guys. I mean, seriously, come on. I'm sorry, you can tease me a lot, but I was trying to make a point that, yes, and what happened, what he was saying is that staff didn't negotiate amongst them. Everybody participated, and everybody said, city really needs more access. School district said, hey, this needs to happen, but it wasn't us, as it has been in But it wasn't us, as it has been in the past, arguing against our colleagues who are also elected. It was, right, it was a really, for the most part.
Some of your former colleagues.
Some of your former colleagues.
Anyway.
If you want to go there, I'll go there too.
I won't go there too. Okay, let me say it again. This benefits the entire community. It does, but it was, okay, I didn't start to go here, guys.
Some of us were there when you were there, so we get it.
Well done.
And actually, you were on the council and I came to as a school board member.
I was there.
All right. And it's important for the entire community. It's not, and, and one thing that really comes out in this agreement is that we have codified our access to the small gym, as Director Lehman pointed out. We, the school district has acknowledged, we get to use this for our summer sunset basketball league. We don't have to go back year after year. There's so many things in this agreement that benefit us that are cleaned up. And I think it's a terrific agreement, not to mention the 10 years. So well done, everybody, and all the hard work you did on the ad hoc committee, all of it. There you go.
Well done. Councilor Lesser?
How do I follow that? Obviously, there'll need to be public comment, but the whole point of pulling this was to acknowledge how many people brought this into being. And it's a 10-year community that I think benefits our entire community. I was mayor back in 2013 when we first brought this forward and we adopted it with two of my colleagues here. It took a lot of work. There were many that were skeptical of it. This moves this forward and I just want to point this as a positive and that's why I pulled it and I'm glad we're moving forward.
Great. Anybody else comments? Public comment, please, Martha. Anyone here want to talk about this item? No? Anyone on Zoom? Then council, close public comment, council. We have a first by Councilor Horwath and a second, Councilor Lesser.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Before we go next item, I'm going to go out of order with City Attorney. I'm going to go back and uphold a comment for a second because I was remiss and I was reminded by Councilor Horwath, which went back to the future. I've got one. 11 years ago, 11 years ago, at the US Conference of Mayors, I met the CEO of Dunkin'. Then it was called Dunkin' Donuts. Now it's just called Dunkin'. Took me 11 years and my colleagues here, and thank you all for attending the grand opening and staff, Teline and Dr. Lee in Public Works, everyone made it happen and staff, they're officially here. Today is a one-week anniversary of Dunkin', the corner of MBB and Sepulveda. Yes, it is walk up, not drive through, but they're doing a great business and they want to see all of you there. Yes, Jill, they support the downtown, they support schools. In fact, 10 of their employees are Miracoast students. Do you know that?
Yeah.
10 of their employees are Miracoast students. So the higher locally, Jim, you have to leave downtown every once in a while. Jim Burton, you have to cross the border.
On an e-bike.
And go, but not on the e-bike, and cross over there and check it out. But we're glad they're in the community and yes, they provide sales tax revenue to make Director Shroyan in Finance happy as well. Catherine Riquez was there on the grand opening. It was great to have everybody there. So thank you all for supporting them and I know I assume some of you soon, there next time. With that, since I opened public, public comments. Anyone here in comment about that item, anything? Anybody on Zoom? Oh, sorry, Mr. Burton, no public comment, you're good? No one on Zoom? I'll close public hearing and go to item number six. That was pulled with consent.
Yes, Your Honor, I pulled this and similar reasons as Councilor Lesser to kind of get this out in the record because there seems to be a bit of a gap of information here, right? It's part of the city's 2013 strategic plan. Don't blame me for that. Let's see what you're, and then it was presented to council in 2014. And then it's not until 2020 that it was brought to this council or parts of this council. And now it's being brought back again because 19 pages were missing. I mean, when was this thing written?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. My name's Eric Lee.
Why, why would I adopt a 10-year-old plan?
So my understanding is that the plan was written in 2019 by the, by staff and our consultants. If you look at the actual attachment, it indicates 2019.
Right, but the staff report says 1314 and jumps to 12.
Well, I think that's when the work to get this going started. But my understanding is it took some while to get the right people in place to get this plan together. And I think that it came to the council in 2020, which is right after COVID started. And I think that it was, I think it was on the agenda, like maybe in the spring, and then it didn't get heard because of all the emergency actions and it was later heard, I think, in the summer of 2020. And it was ultimately adopted, but as we're looking at the record, there was only 19 of the 66 pages that were actually presented to the council. And so in the interest of transparency, we're bringing this to your attention so that the full plan is adopted and not only will it be posted on our website, but really it'd be the guiding light for the Public Works Department on managing the urban forest.
So was it based on the information provided in 2014, 2013, rather? Because that's when we had a tree canopy committee and all that.
So I believe there's earlier work as part of that, the city strategic plan and the street tree inventory that ultimately led into other work and culminated in an urban forest master plan.
Because I mean, the inventory has to be stale by now. It's nearly 10 years old. So I guess my point is.
I think a refresh probably, you could argue that it's warranted. I believe that the action items in the plan call for regular revisiting of the plan, keeping it updated and make sure we have good data. And so, yeah, I think that, you know, with the council's adoption of the entire document, it's going to be a real good blueprint for our staff moving forward on what the expectation
Well, okay, thank you. I mean, my point to my colleagues, I guess, on this one is, this has been a chopped up effort. And I know that we've come to this conclusion that we've got, you know, it's a plan to follow, because of things, but I don't know if the inventory is good anymore. I'm sure that we've lost some street trees, especially in the right of way. We don't follow through. I've seen trees chopped down along the streets named after trees, actually walnut, pine, they're replaced with palm trees and the like, or not replaced at all. I've seen some areas where they get taken on after. I just don't know, you know, it's great that we have this as a plan, but garbage in, garbage out. I just don't know that this information is valid at this point. I mean, we can have a plan as how to maintain trees and what future plan that we want to address trees, but as far as knowing what we have now, I have a hard time believing that this information is true and accurate at this point. What to do about that? I'm not suggesting, I know I don't want to start a process like this last one, those 2013, 2014, jump five years to 2019 and then jump another four years to 2023 and say, hey, I don't know how we missed the fact back then that we were missing 66 pages of the staff report and presenting it to council, but that's a little odd to me as well. This is not the way things should be done.
Comments? Councilor Horwath?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, it is interesting. So there's a couple of things the plan was supposed to do. It's supposed to tell us what we have and then decide what we want to do for the future. And to Councilmember Napolitano's point, if, you know, even if it was done in 2019, you know, it doesn't mean that we have those trees today. And what a resident, you know, pointed out that even though in the plan it states that if a tree is removed, it's supposed to be replaced by one tree and that's not always happening. And I think that we need, in some ways, fine, we'll adopt this, but it almost needs to be more simple. Like what is our guidance? What is our belief about our urban forest? Do we care that we have it? Do we want to increase it? Do we want it to serve a certain purpose? And then all the ways it's handled, get in the weeds, if you will, how it's replaced, how it's done, fine. Because, you know, one of the things that comes to my mind, especially this time of year, it's not quite super hot. It's hot, though, and we're very lucky where we live. But, you know, trees are going to play a very important part in reducing the temperature of our community. And so we need to, I don't, I don't remember if, you know, the type was pretty small, if that was in here, but I think that that needs to be one of the stated goals is to, you know, maintain that canopy, maintain our trees so that we help reduce the heat of our community. And the same resident wrote in to talk about palm trees, which are beautiful, and I guess I learned are technically not trees, but they don't do anything to reduce the heat in, in the environment, right? They don't, and that, I was, when the resident wrote that, I thought, oh, wow. That's what kind of triggered the environmental question for me. So again, maybe back in 2013, full disclosure, I was on the council. We weren't giving direction. We wanted a cataloging. We wanted, this is incredibly, you know, methodical for what was there then. But I think we, I would encourage us to think about direct, doesn't mean this report is bad, but how would we, you know, what would the next step be? How would we say, this is what we want in our community. It's of value to us to have trees, have mature trees, have these kind of trees, do this, do that. That's all.
Thank you. Councilor Lesser?
Comments by my two colleagues are right on point. That was my recollection of what the point of this was all about. A pathway forward perhaps with council consensus is to have staff come back and confirm to what extent is the inventory accurate, consistent with the plan, how we should update it, and to what extent is there a need for further investment in our trees? I know the Public Works Director and I have been in conversation about replacing trees on the Veterans Parkway that blew down during windstorms earlier this year. But to what extent is there a need for further engagement to implement this plan? That's one pathway forward.
Thank you. Other council comments? Thank you, Dr. Lee. Public comment? I'm sorry.
I don't want the, the whole forest and trees thing here, you know, with getting.
Don't lose it.
I think, you know, we're coming forward with a mea culpa that said, we gave you a document, nobody noticed there were these pages missing. We're bringing it to you now just to let you know, hey, this is what you adopted, whether you knew it or not, this is what was adopted. What you're talking about is the next logical step. It's a work plan type item. We can do that. It's not something we can turn on a dime on, but really, you know, I applaud Eric for coming to me and saying, this thing didn't get adopted the way it should have been. And that's what we're doing tonight. Nothing more, nothing less.
I want to make it clear that I am not pointing fingers at current staff, certainly. I'm not pointing at past staff. I am pointing that there is just this gap in process along with, I don't know why it went from 2014, you know, to 2019 to get something written for him and before council. I have no idea. And, you know, we should have some idea. I'm not blaming, I'm looking for information and we're trying to find solutions. I'm just not, you know, happy with it going back and forth like this. And I do think that in terms of process, again, it gets back to, this is a reminder that we just need to work out procedures so that stuff like this is kept on track and it comes before council in a timely fashion, not five years after some of the work is done. Because we have those same issues now. We're doing parking yet again. Every eight years, we do parking. It doesn't, you know, it doesn't change that much, but we're going to do another study. We're paying consultants, wasting money on consultants. So I'm happy that you brought it forward and I'm glad that we found the gap. You know, why that happened, I don't know either, but it just goes to, we need to tighten some things up though and process so that that kind of thing doesn't happen again in the future too. It's on all of us.
Appreciate that. I'm going to get public comment and we'll come back to you definitely. So anyone here want to talk about, all right, public comments, please come down here and speak, then we'll go, Martha, we're going to Zoom after.
Hi, Rita Crabtree Compa. I just wanted to speak a little bit on this, just as I walk around the neighborhood, particularly on the Green Belt Veterans Parkway, there are a lot of trees that were taken down over a year ago, some that even fell within this last year. And again, I just wanted to make a comment that I don't see things being replaced and I hope that they would be because it is vital to our environment. And I would request maybe, I know as a homeowner, if we do a new garden or anything, we get a list of, you know, an inventory of, or a list of the things that are beneficial to our area, you know, drought resistant, et cetera. Perhaps we could get a list of those trees and plan properly for where they would be planted because there's some space issues, there are some height issues. You don't want to be planting an oak tree where somebody's, you know, house is going to be blocked from any views or anything. So just a comment that I do hope that we get the inventory. I do hope that we move forward with something cohesive with this and get trees planted. That would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else? Anybody else speak here? We'll go to Zoom, Martha. All right, we'll close public comment, council. I like Councilor Lesser's suggestion. All right, I'll speak once we're going to make our motions made. Those who are new to the city, we've done tree master plan. Jill, you remember, this is like my third tree master plan. And second, our tree list, approved list has been on our website unless it was wiped out. It's been there for years. This is not new to us, to the city about trees, replacement, tree approved list. This is not new. If you've ever taken a tree in your yard, you know all this. But if new people just moved here have no clue, please go to the city website, list it down there, you'll see, Prue Tree List. Unless it got wiped out for a reason, if it is, let me know, but it's been there. It's not new to the city. I'm not a big fan of annual surveys because we have storms, rarely, but when we get them, Joe, we have disease in the city, roadway expansion and high winds. Trees change. We could count every single tree in the city tomorrow and next week something will change. So I'm not a fan of annual tree surveys at all. Biannual at least is a way to look at things. I think we've done a great job. The trees I've seen that come down have been replaced. I don't know every single tree in the city, but the ones that I know of that we had problems with were replaced. Now we have ways to go. We're still catching up. I know it sounds like a cliche to hear this now, but people keep using the word COVID, COVID on foresters and replacement trees and people to come and do the work for us. It's not SNAP, council, government, it happens in one week. It doesn't work that way. We wait our turn like everybody else. You've seen our roadways getting repaved that hadn't been paved in seven years. Directly trying to catch up. Sometimes you can't find workers that actually want to work, believe it or not, and get roadways done. Trees are the same way. We're trying to catch up, folks. So the mea culpa that Bruce talked about, about having pages missed, I wasn't there in 1314. I don't know what it was like. Doesn't matter. It's 23. I don't care what happened behind me. But looking forward, we need a plan. I think it's a great starting point here. And Councilor Lesser's point, a survey, do you see where we are in two years? All right, it's something to start with. But I know we're not perfect on the system, but a plan is a plan until it doesn't, until something falls off. But I agree with your comments, David, about taking it forward in some kind of checklist that makes sense. I would support going forward and I'll defer to you on your motion, which is.
I'm sorry.
The goal of my motion is to capture the comments that I've heard here, so if I've missed something, please let me know. But I think the direction to staff would be to bring back to council first a confirmation that the current inventory is valid and if it's not, what needs to be done to bring it up to date consistent with the underlying plan itself? That's the first thing. Second is to discuss the tree replacement policy, consistent with the plan, and give us some documentation as to how that's going, particularly given that I know firsthand of what one of the speakers just indicated, that certain large trees have fallen or were removed and have not been replaced. So an update on the replacement process. What else?
No, I was, what about direction on sort of an environmental impact of, you know, do we want to place that as a stated goal, like to have a tree canopy to help mitigate the impacts or is that?
I think we know that.
It's, to your point, it is on, it was on, Eric, directly, it was on the original tree master plan. We preserved trees in Manhattan Beach for X, Y, and Z. Environmental concerns.
Okay.
Shade. All that was, listen, I would just ask a friendly amendment to your direction, Councilor Lesser's point, when you go back and look at the website and see if, A, that it's still there and B, that the comments that we had originally and we looked at in the last plan showed that for an action, why trees are so important to our community, to our city. I think it's still there, but if not, can you go back and re-add that, the importance of having trees and replacement trees in our city? That's the only comment I would make.
And I think on the Veterans Parkway, there is a recommendation of specific trees for different areas, but.
Mayor Tim Franklin?
Yes, so disregarding the plethora of water that we've received from the, what was that called, the stream, something?
Once every 100-year storm?
Yeah, well, but the atmospheric rivers. Yeah, yeah, atmospheric river, thank you. So, but I think planning maybe for drought tolerant, I mean, we do live in a semi-arid desert. And so if we could maybe, and I apologize, I didn't read it in detail. I saw the overlying issue here, but in doing that, I think we have an opportunity if trees do need to be replaced or some consideration given to drought tolerant vegetation. I know you can't have big canopy trees, but still, take a look at that, you know, so when or if we do have another drought, a serious drought, we're going to be in better shape.
Thank you. Councilor Horwath?
Yeah, one last comment. So if a tree master plan arise on the agenda, but it's not voted upon in its entirety, did anybody really hear? anybody really hear?
I know where this is going. Voting screen, please.
Had to be a tree comment right there. All right, with that, we've taken comment, council, voting screen is up. Councilor Lesser made the motion, but Jim Franklin is the second. Councilor Lesser, here we go, voting screen.
Very clarification required by staff. Are you adopting a resolution to incorporate the pages that were missing and then we're moving forward from there?
That's my understanding, but Councilor made, they're making a motion, we'll ask Kim.
I will so amend the motion, thank you for suggesting that. Subject hit the second?
Yeah.
Okay, that would be my motion.
So noted, thank you for catching that. All right, voting screen is up.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you all, and good comments, everyone. We good? You guys are good? All right. General Business Item K, I number 11, consideration of an appointment to the vacant Library Commission Seat Number Three, led by our City Clerk, Lisa Tamura.
Wait, we just jumped ahead.
I'm sorry, did I skip one? Oh, sorry.
You did nine.
I jumped ahead. So we're going to go back, this is Go Back Day. Sorry, Director Sherrillian, oh, Libby is going to take over. It's going to be I number nine, public hearing regarding the annual stormwater service fee of fiscal year 2324, Jed, by Julie Bonner and Acting Finance Director, and you're in charge.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Montgomery and members of the City Council. So the next two items will be presented by Libby Brethauer, our Financial Services Manager.
Wow, there we go.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor and City Council Members. Tonight I am presenting Resolution Number 2398 for the collection of stormwater assessment fees. The city levies an annual stormwater service fee on each parcel with, a property within the city to finance the cost of ongoing operations and maintenance of stormwater facilities and services. The fee is based on an engineering analysis of the city's stormwater drain, or storm drain system performed in 1996 by an external engineering firm. The typical annual fee is $19.12 per year for a single-family residence. Property assessments generate approximately $345,000 annually and have remained unchanged since 1996 due to the passage of Proposition 218. With assessments fixed, ongoing costs for operations and maintenance result in a general fund subsidy of nearly $2.7 million in fiscal year 2324. Notification of tonight's public hearing was advertised in the Beach Reporter. At this time, we recommend you open a public hearing for the proposed assessments. Assuming there is not a majority protest, the adoption of Resolution 2398 will order the stormwater fee to be collected, and staff will submit the data to the county for inclusion on property tax bills. This concludes my presentation, and we are also available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Libby, well said. Council questions? Councilor Politano?
No questions, Your Honor.
All right, we'll go to, anyone else, public comments on this item? While the decider is going to come to speak, folks, this has not been heard since 1996 is the last time we had a fee changed on this item, 1996. Some of you still in grade school back then.
My hair was brown.
Good evening. I just wanted to speak to this, I think it's really important that we do raise, you know, consider the, the extra fees. 1996 is 27 years ago, my daughter just celebrated her 27th birthday, and I think that's a really, really long time. I would possibly propose or request that you consider, for people who it could be a hardship, maybe they can pay it over two installments or something like that, if it's something that's difficult for them to consider. But I do strongly agree that this needs to be increased so we can save our general fund. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker.
Always absolutely concur with Rita, just raise it, whatever we need to do. Stormwater is extremely important, it should not come out of the general fund. I don't know the numbers and the financial background, but Director Sherrillian and whatever the basis that they've come up with would strongly encourage council to raise the fees to whatever it needs to be as a property owner here in downtown. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else here talk about stormwater fees? Seeing none, public comment at the Zoom level, Martha? No Zoom comments, shocked. We'll close public comments, council? Councilor Politano?
Thank you, Your Honor. I have moved to adopt Resolution 23-0098. This is actually an adoption of the current annual fee, and so, you know, the issue of whether to raise it will be coming back to us at another time. But it does need to be raised because we're subsidizing out of the general fund, and that money goes to the police, fire, and all the other services that folks want and expect from us, and to not raise that fee, which would be, I think, $128 annually to cover those costs. They're paying $19 now, again, that's $19.96, and I don't, I don't know of anything else I'm paying that's still $19.96. Certainly not gasoline, but anyway, for that reason, I move approval, Your Honor.
Thank you. Any other council comments? We have a first, Councilor Politano, I was a second, voting screen, please.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Finance?
Mr. Mayor, just as a point of interest, the request to have it in installments, this appears on the property tax bill and by virtue is already broken into two installments if people choose to pay.
Yes, correct. And also as a point of reference, those of you who've been to the city for a while understand, anyone has a problem, water bill, anything else? The City Finance Department can work with, anyone has an issue, not the first time we talked about it. So anybody has a question or cannot pay anything, let City Staff know, we'll work with everyone that calls, and we go from there. I'm sorry. Item number 10, public hearing, consideration of adopting Resolution Regarding Renewal of Downtown Business Improvement District, BID, fiscal year 2324. And let's see, I have a feeling that Finance leaves one too, and I see Libby's up and at it, you're in charge.
Yes, thank you. Also, tonight we are pleased to present for your consideration the renewal of the Downtown Business Improvement District for fiscal year 2324. This annual renewal is a process required by state law. The process for renewal began during the June 20th City Council meeting with the approval of the Resolution of Intention to Renew and Levy the Assessment. The next step is to hold the public hearing tonight to accept testimony for or against the proposed assessments. Approval is based on whether there is a weighted majority protest by businesses paying 50% or more of the total assessment. Assessments for the district remain unchanged. The Downtown Business Improvement District is funded through an 80% surcharge on the annual business license tax for its members, up to a maximum of $600 per business. All legal requirements for tonight's public hearing have been met, including mailing of the, mailing copies of the resolution to all BID members and a notice published in the Beach Reporter. Several steps need to be taken by City Council tonight in order to renew the bid. One, hold a public hearing to receive testimony, assuming insufficient protests are received, adopt Resolution 2381, authorizing the collection of assessments. Two, ratify the Business Improvement District Advisory Board members. Three, adopt Resolution 2382, authorizing the City Manager and Business Improvement District Advisory Board Chairperson to enter into an agreement with the Downtown Manhattan Beach Business and Professional Association for services outlined in the attached activity plan and budget, which start on page 416 on the Agenda packet. And four, authorize the dispersment of BID funds collected during the fiscal year 2223. Jill Lampkin, Executive Director of the Downtown Business and Professional Association, as well as staff, are here to answer any questions. If none, we recommend you open the public hearing at this time.
Thank you, Libby. Council questions? Seeing none, open public comment?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank the Finance Department because they have been incredible partners this last couple of years, and we have worked together to identify businesses that hadn't been licensed and were needing to get up to speed, and when they weren't being able to make contact with a business, I had more recent contact information, and so we really worked together, and I just want to say thank you because it made a big difference in us collecting more revenue for our district. So thank you very much for your hard work. And if you have any questions, I'm here.
Thank you, well said. Anyone else here not connected to the BID that want to speak? None, let's go to Zoom, Martha? None, closed public comment, council? Councilor Politano?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is a yearly due, so I'm making a motion in honor of Jim Burton to conduct, or, you conduct the, adopt Resolution Numbers 23-0081 and 23-0082, ratify the board and authorize the dispersment of assessments collected through June 30th, 2023.
Perfect, I see a first by Councilor Politano, I see a second, Councilor Hoeworth.
In honor of Jill Lampkin.
In honor of Jill Lampkin. And I want to thank Acting Finance Director Bonnerchuk and Libby Wilson for being here and making it go through smoothly, faster than Director Sherrillian does. Go voting screen, please. I know you're watching, Steve.
Show up in person, we know what happens. Motion passes 5-0.
There you go. Thank you both for being here, appreciate that. Now the one I jumped the gun, I apologize, I spoke to jump to number 11 earlier, this is where we conduct a, actually, we're going to do an appointment, the vacant Library Commission Seat, led by our very own, well, Lisa Tamura, but...
Oh, thank you. I'd like to introduce Deputy City Clerk Patricia Matson, she'll walk you through the voting process.
Welcome, Deputy City Clerk Matson.
Good evening, thank you. Just a little bit of background, on July 5th, City Council accepted the resignation from Library Commissioner Sadie Newell and declared her seat number three vacant. You directed staff to contact individuals that applied for the Library Commission as part of our 2023 Annual Board and Commission Appointment Process to see if they were still interested. Staff did reach out, and there are three applicants for your consideration, which are Shannon Boyle, Mike Millia, and Elizabeth Rubino. If there's no questions, and before we move to the appointment process, it would be appropriate for public comment.
Perfect, thank you for that. Council, any questions? We've all done this before many a time. All right, public comment on this item before we start the round robin appointment process? Seeing none here, about on Zoom, Martha? Closed public comment part, we'll go to voting screen, and Ms. Matson, you're in charge, we'll follow your lead.
All righty, if everybody has their nomination paper in front of them, we'll begin with Councilmember Hoeworth for nominations.
Okay, thank you. First of all, I want to thank Commissioner Newell, wherever she is now on, on her travels back east. She's an incredibly well-read person, let me just tell you that. But I would like to nominate Betsy Rubino or Elizabeth Rubino.
Councilmember Lesser?
And I would have done the same, but I will nominate Shannon Boyle.
Councilmember Politano?
Mike Millay.
I'll nominate Mike Millay.
No further nominations for me.
Okay, beginning with Councilmember Lesser?
I will nominate Betsy Rubino and Shannon Boyle.
Okay, Councilmember Politano?
Millay.
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 Rubino and Millay.
Okay, so Betsy Rubino and Mike Millay move forward. And beginning with Councilmember Politano.
Millay.
Millay.
Millay for me as well.
I will go along with my colleagues and nominate Mike Millay.
I suppose we should make it unanimous.
Make it unanimous for Mike Millay as your new Library Commission Seat Number Three.
Great, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Well done. Try to give it an easy way once in a while.
Excellent.
Item number 12, consideration of resolution approved in agreement with DePere, Rosabeth, and Litback, this is one we're continuing to a future date, so we're continuing item number 12, folks. For watching this at home, we can send this item to a later date, we're going to move to item 13. Consideration of revision to the signage and wayfinding master plan led by Public Works Director Lee.
Good evening again. City Engineer Katie Doherty will be doing the presentation tonight.
Thank you, sir.
Do we have all the pages?
With that, welcome, Commissioner Hoeworth. Engineer Doherty, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Montgomery and Honorable Council Members. I'm here to present some fairly minor changes to the wayfinding master plan and provide an update on the wayfinding project phase one. I am going to start the presentation with a step backwards a little bit, just to make sure that we're all on the same page of what the goal of the program was and where we started. So this may be a bit of a repeat for some of you that have been involved in some of this process, but for the benefit of the public, I just wanted to run through it again. This effort began in 2014. The city retained a design consultant by the name of Selbert Perkins Design in 2015. In 2017, the City Council selected the Beach Classic Design, which I'll be showing images of in a minute. In 2019, the wayfinding master plan was developed and approved, and over the last two years, well, year, we've been preparing the plans, and we've done a pretty comprehensive constructability review over the last six months or so, which kind of is a result of, of the recommendations that we're bringing forward today. So to take it way back, the purpose of this program is to build awareness of the city through a comprehensive identification and wayfinding system for both visitors and residents. The goal is to preserve the small-town character, to create a unified visual language to facilitate parking, which is the phase one, eliminate sign clutter, and design a unified and flexible system to help facilitate better maintenance and replacement. So as mentioned, the first phase that we're currently working on is to standardize and replace parking directional signage, specifically in the downtown and North Manhattan Beach areas. These images show the variety of signs that are in place now, some of them are still there, some of them have been replaced, but just for a visual on that. And then to touch on future phases, phase two will be a replacement of identity signs, so street identity, identity signs, identity for certain areas of the city. We won't be replacing those monuments that are shown there, the destinations, but directional signage to them would be replaced and unified. Future phases, phase three and four, phase, phase three is regulation signage, and phase four would be amenities, such as what's shown here, bike racks and information about public art in the city. So the changes that we're recommending to the master plan tonight, first is an alternative font and logo for our street signs, replacement of the pier symbol from the master plan to be consistent with city, current city branding, inclusion of the business district directories into our phase one project, and recommendation that all of our street name signs are two-sided instead of one-sided. So to dive into those recommendations quickly, we have developed this alternative font for our street name signs, the Spartan MB font is excellent and beautiful, it's very long. So we have come across the issue of for longer street names, such as Manhattan Beach Boulevard, we're having to use a lot of acronyms to get it to fit, so we are proposing this Futura font instead. I have a slide here, I'm sorry, this is a little bit clunky, but it, just to give you a visual of, of what we're, we're trying to get at, the top one is, are the existing signs in, in green, that the next one down is the approved font with everything spelled out, the way we would prefer. The one third down is what's currently installed at Peck and Manhattan Beach Boulevard, where we've had to abbreviate both beach and boulevard in order to get it to fit on the sign. So the recommended font would allow for, the recommended font would allow for us to fit all of that information and more. So I'll move on to the next recommendation. This is a quick update on the way that we're showing our city seal, the city mark, where we've, we're proposing adding a, a black circle just to provide some definition, and adding the text "City of Manhattan Beach" to, to the seal and to the bottom of the street signs, which wasn't in the original master plan. The pier symbol, this, the top one is the one that was recommended from the designer, the bottom one is consistent with the logo that we all sport now, so it would just be replacing the top one with the bottom one. And to move on to the street identity signs, let me just flip to that page. The AO3 sign, which, let me, good thing I have my glasses on, which is the overhead, the one that says Sepulveda, the hanging one from the, the light poles, we're recommending that that is two, a two-sided sign, the, the current master plan recommends only a one-sided sign, so, or includes just a one-sided sign for issues of visibility, we think the double-sided sign is preferable. Same for the, the pole-mounted street identification signs, the ones that say Highland here. This is proposed in the master plan to be a one-sided sign, and we think two-sided would be better. So to move on to the directory signs, which is on the right side of this image, we're proposing to replace the directory signs in the downtown district and the North Manhattan Beach district, the ones that are included in the master plan with the ones that have been developed by the districts, which we've done some significant outreach on lately, which I'll get into, and I'll go through those very quickly. The first one, this is an image of the directory sign that we're proposing for the North Manhattan Beach area. There are... There are three locations proposed. One is outside of Lot Four, one is at 33rd on Highland, and one is at 35th on Highland, which you can see kind of demarcated in that map. They're about seven feet tall, so they are quite significantly sized. And then the one in the downtown district is a bit shorter and wider, and there are four locations proposed for these signs. So I wanted to dip into the recent public outreach that we have done. We did two in-person events, one in downtown at the farmer's market on Tuesday. We did one in the North Manhattan Beach area on Saturday to solicit community feedback, which I will say is, for the most part, was positive. They had some, you know, fairly minor comments that the districts will take back to their designer and try and work in. There was also an online survey. We passed out cards with a QR code to take an online survey. We received 32 responses. Overall, it was one-third of the respondents said yes to installing the business directories, and two-thirds said no. The main reasons were we use phones, ugly unsightly sign clutter, too big, et cetera. So that's only 32 respondents that I would say that's very contradictory to the feedback that we received in person. So, but I did want to share that feedback with you just for
Thank you.
Because we did it. So, and Jill Lampkin is here, if there are any questions specifically about the business directories. So to keep going with the presentation, we did want to just clarify, there have been some questions lately about whether or not the signs, the street identification signs are backlit, internally lit, and they are. The ones on the major streets in the city will be lit at night. Regulations say that they can either be a certain amount of reflectivity or lit, and we're going with the lighted version. But the local street signs, the one that are pole-mounted within the neighborhoods, would not be lit. They would be reflective. Oops, went too far. So as I mentioned, we have, over the past several months, done a pretty thorough constructibility review of the plans that were developed. We looked very carefully at each location that the signs are proposed, at the signs themselves as they are proposed. And we came up with a couple of recommendations for moving forward. The AO5 pylon signs, the large one there that says, with a big P at the top that says Lot Two, that's very tall, it's seven feet tall. So that will require quite a beefy foundation to go with it. And this was proposed to be what we call deferred submittal during construction. Basically, the contractor would design and get that foundation permitted. That's not the best way of doing it, so our recommendation is to do a full analysis, structural analysis and design here now, so that we have that and we know what we're doing as we move into construction. That's the same for the pole-mounted sign that's next to it. And then the identifier signs, the BO1, the one that is shown on the light pole there, that's also a seven-foot-tall sign, which you can imagine would create sort of a sail on that light pole. So we are recommending structural analysis on the poles that we're proposing that these be placed to avoid any issues once they're installed. So those are the main outcomes of our constructibility review. So we're proposing the next step is that we proceed with these structural analyses before bidding the project. So I have said most of this already. Let's see, multiple sign locations are adjacent to, let's see, adjustments are recommended in order to fit existing conditions. This is just, so the first one is the structural analysis, the first bullet point here. The second one is the signs in the plans are shown, certain signs are shown in the plans that are currently in a different location. So we really want to look at, well, it's working there now, so do we really want to move it, say, across the street? So that's the type of kind of deep dive that we would do into the Phase One. And so that's what that bullet point is referring to. So after all those analyses are complete, we're expecting to return to City Council in the fall with these plans for your approval and for approval to move forward with bidding and construction of the Phase One project. So here tonight, we're asking you to consider the revisions that I presented here to the wayfinding master plan and to receive the report on the Phase One project. This activity here tonight is determined to be not a project as defined by CEQA. And we'd also like approval, it's not listed in the staff report, but we'd like approval to proceed with the business district directory signs and include them as part of our construction contract moving forward. So that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Great, stand by Captain for a second, just so everybody knows, this is the fifth time the council as a whole has seen this. And we have three new council members since the first time it's happened. So comments that are made in 2017 to 20 have all thrown them out the window now. We're starting branding all over again, except the staff is still driving this forward that the council at that time has agreed on. You wonder how we got here? This is how we got here. So opinions may have changed since that time. But with that being said, we're going to start now because all of my colleagues have the questions. So that's the history of why this is brought up. Start with Councilmember Howarth and work our way from there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I appreciate that staff has noticed some things that, you know, could be improved because when we originally made these decisions, you know, you do the best, you make the best choice you can. I mean, Councilmember Napolitano and I were on the kind of logo and branding street sign committee back then, but I think it's really great that staff has like, you know, looked at it and said, okay, this could be better, double-sided signs, et cetera. Some residents have written in and just want to know if this is considered. Some have written in, I like the white signs with the black lettering and the logo. A few residents have mentioned, you know, that with our, when it's cloudy, when it's, you know, June gloom, it's hard to see the white and the lettering. Was there any consideration? Did you guys talk about that at all? You know, I haven't noticed visibility, but I just, issues, but has this been brought to your attention?
Yes, we've received those comments as well. I think by installing the backlit, the actual lit signs, like at Manhattan Beach Boulevard and Peck, would improve that. Then they may be referring to the ones that are in downtown that are just reflective and not lit, but, you know, we're open to.
Well, that's a good
Does that mean when there's no clouds in the sky, we had a blue background, we wouldn't be able to see that?
I'm just relaying, I just want, I wanted to hear the concerns addressed.
Saying that, you know, in response to the contrast, black and white.
I agree.
I mean, is that a safety hazard, having black and white signs? Santa Barbara has black and white.
It's not. The white sign, the black and white signs are fully compliant with, you know, road regulations. I was out at MBP in Peck last night and I looked, I could read them, so.
Good, good. I have just a couple more. With that illumination, what's the power source for that?
They are, there's power coming through the pole.
Oh, oh, right, right, so it's not, I had these visions of having to, someone having to climb up and change a battery, just checking, that's fantastic.
No batteries, no.
Okay, and then the last thing I might reserve for comments, although I just, I'm sad about the font, the font change. I guess you can't, it doesn't make sense to make the signs any bigger, or was that considered? Because the Arial font versus the branded font, I actually think it's a little harder to read because it's, I love Arial. Not, I'm not a Arial
Futura?
Futura, Futura, thank you, thank you very much. I love Futura too, I love it more than Arial. But I think it feels, when you see it, it feels very thin, and with older eyes, it kind of runs together a little more to me. So this is something
You're going to hold that for comments?
I'm saying it now, I might say it again. I don't like it.
There you go. Not a question, just a comment.
No offense.
Councilmember Lesser?
So with questions like that, can you go to Slide 13, please?
Yes.
I just want to confirm that if this council does desire to change the color of the street signs back to blue or to retain blue, I guess that's called the reverse sequence in the palette, we would have the ability to do so during this review because that's not expressly stated in the staff report.
If you choose to, yes.
Because as a matter of fact, and again, this is all about questions, not comments, I can tell you, multiple residents have complained to me, I mean, of all the issues we're dealing with, the mayor has noted, how many people have come down to talk about our city budget? They have complained about the white signs. And just looking at this diagram, I see why. Because I personally much prefer the blue, as one who was very much an advocate for this initial effort when it began, to come up with some uniformity. So we'll save this for comments to see if, in fact, there might be some consensus on this and when we might be able to retain the blue signs that in my view define our community in many ways. And then the next question I had with regard to this downtown directories, and I know two colleagues have been involved in getting input from the community, I just wanted to confirm how often it would be anticipated that they'd be updated? Because businesses come and go, and I just wasn't sure what the plan would be, particularly with the investment and the scale of a directory.
Well, they are designed to be created by a vinyl sticker, basically, so the business in the map could be completely removed and replaced. And I think I'll let Jill talk about the frequency in which she would plan to do that.
At least for the downtown, because it's also the north end too.
North end too, yes. So thank you for the question, very good one, because obviously our new businesses are just as important. So just like Katie said, it is scheduled to be that entire middle section is a removable adhesive. So quarterly updates are what we've asked for. They're going to provide us with a updatable document so that we can just go in and change. It will change the colors of the buildings because the building color indicates what type of business it is. The address will always stay the same, obviously, but then the names will also change, so once a quarter.
Great.
Okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And for city staff, was there a consideration of a smaller-scale sign in terms of this type of business directory?
Not to my knowledge. In the map, this is what it shows in the master plan, which is the seven-foot-tall one, which is exactly what, the size of what is being installed in North Manhattan. The downtown has decided to go for a shorter, wider one. I think that's just because their map is a little bit wider than in North Manhattan Beach. So I'm not aware of discussions of a smaller one.
And the sites identified in the location will accommodate that size of a directory?
Yes, we've done walkthroughs to make sure that they
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilor Napolitano?
Yeah, to that point though, if I could ask Jill to come back down because now, you know, if two-thirds of the businesses that you surveyed that responded don't like it, well, what did the board say?
The board, the board likes it, everyone likes it. We've had it at multiple meetings where people have commented.
Then who doesn't like it?
These were, this was a community survey that was sent out through email to just residents. It's residents. Our businesses are all definitely in favor of it, very excited. And it was a total of 32 people that responded to the, from the community. So, and, you know, so just saying, I mean, the businesses are very
I'm going to bet that's more than people who actually talked about the signage color, but, I mean, it's still, well, I mean, for that, because it was hard to find places to put them where it wasn't obtrusive. And they're going to be obtrusive wherever they are. Okay, thank you, I'll save comments.
Okay.
May I approach Tim Franklin?
Yes, thank you.
Do you need me still?
I'm fine.
Okay.
So I also have heard from people who are concerned about the white background and prefer the blue. Now, I just happened to notice, I believe the one's coming up here, I was coming up 15th, crossing over Highland and going that way. Are these prototypes that are up here?
The one at 15th and Highland is a prototype that was installed during this master plan effort.
Okay, great, so we will have the block numbers?
Block number, oh, the block numbers.
Like the 600 South and
Yes.
Things like that, okay. Very important for wayfinding.
Yes, agree.
Okay.
If the length will accommodate it, is what Director Lee has said.
Slide 12. You show an example of the light pole. Now, I imagine that the parking sign won't be on every pole, or will it, do you think?
I'm sorry, the directional sign there.
Yeah, you see, you got the, you got the street sign in blue, and you've got the parking sign there next to it as a demonstration of what can go on the arm, or whatever you might have a more technical name, of the arm of the pole going over there. Do you anticipate, because we always want to know, we want people to know where parking is, that you would, it would be teamed up with that? Would be paired together with
Yes, yes, so we would strategically place those parking hangers next to the street where it made sense to, that was actually, you know, providing direction to parking.
Okay, thank you. And the, going to the directory for the North Manhattan Beach Directory, and so I accompanied you on that, thank you and Ally LaTrancia for that. I don't know if it was just me suggesting it, or some people suggested maybe moving the logo up. I even noticed on the downtown one, well, now, it won't be obscured by that tablet, by that table that's there now, but I can picture, no pun intended, people wanting to take selfies with that. You know, hey, I'm in Manhattan Beach, look at me. And so I was just wondering, was there any feedback that indicated that maybe the logo should be up higher? So it could be in pictures?
Yeah, I did hear rumblings of that. Nothing was submitted as part of the formal written process, but I did hear people discussing that when we were out at the farmer's market and in North Manhattan Beach.
Okay. And then I think it was brought up that the word directory is kind of superfluous, isn't it? More people know it's a directory?
Question?
That's a question, I mean, did you find that in any of your feedback?
I, did you hear anybody say that? I didn't, I didn't specifically hear any Yes, at the farmer's market, there were comments about that.
Okay, that they wanted it, or that it was kind of Okay.
That is not necessary.
All right, great. And then the lighting, on page 16, you talk about the lighting. I didn't quite see, or was there a photo of that? Can you tell me, because the, it's so problematic and challenging with the sea air and everything here, of those breaking down, of those getting rusty?
Of the lit, the streetlight signs that are lit?
Yeah, the ones that are lit.
Well, the third one down there is a lit, this is during the daytime, but that is a lit sign. I mean, they're maintainable, so if one were to go out, we would be able to replace the lights in them. So I'm not concerned about the
Okay, so the old ones seem to be like a plastic kind of sign and then the light shining down
Yes, exactly, and there's lights in between the two signs, yeah, two sides of the sign.
Do they seem rather durable? I mean, are we going to
Yes, they're, they're very durable.
Okay. All right. And then this, this, so reading the next agenda item is the Local Travel Network, and they had examples of their signs, you know, the wayfinding signs being on the light poles. And it just seems as though the light poles are getting pretty crowded in general. Was any consideration given to the LTN project in terms of some of these light poles that would have the sign, you know, the street sign, the parking sign, and then somehow the turtle, or whatever it is?
Yeah, I mean, not as part of this, the master plan, which was developed several years ago. The LTN wasn't developed yet, I think, at that time, and I don't want to steal their thunder, I know they're coming up next. But the idea would be to incorporate their, potentially incorporate their logo into our signs so we're not having multiple signs, that it would be all on the same sign on the pole. So that would be part of the discussion and hopefully incorporation of that, of that program into our wayfinding program.
Okay, great, thank you, no more questions, appreciate it.
I'll wrap up here, going to public comment. So Captain, not to make any light of 3M Company and their Post-it notes and 1980s technology with their slip-out of business names in downtown BID or northern BID, did you ever get any questions about making a digital directory like we see at the Manhattan Village Mall, for example? Digital directory, you are here, digital directories, they're either vertical or horizontal. Did a question of digital directories ever come up in your discussions?
Not in discussions that I've been in, have we ever?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, Jill will take that one.
So let me give a little bit of history about how this came to be because we were actually looking at replacing the directories that are downtown about two years ago. And so we had been through the whole process of doing the exploration with digital signs, what types of signs, and we got about six months into the process and I went, wait, why are we reinventing the wheel here? There's already a sign plan for downtown, so we just There's already a sign plan for downtown, so we decided to go with that, but part of the reason that we did is because in looking at the types of signage that they have in some of the newer developments, we don't have the technology, the ability to do that, so it would have to, we don't have all of the power that goes under into all of those areas where you could light the signs, we don't have Wi-Fi or internet that goes to any of those locations, so that would all have to be constructed, it would have to go under sidewalks. It really, we felt like kind of took away from the character of, you know, a small town downtown, which I know a lot of our residents feel very strongly about, and so we decided that that was not a good path for us to continue, we wanted to keep that feeling of local downtown, and so we decided to just go with the design that you guys had already approved, or a former council had already approved.
Good, all right, thank you for that. Also, my comments for the last part, and the terminology is not lit or backlit, it's illuminated.
Yep.
So you hear that word, elimination means the back of a sign, like the target sign is illuminated, so our street signs are illuminated, not backlit, or lit just eliminated, so we're all consistent with the terminology calling, that way the people won't get confused by it. But with that, we'll go to public comments first, and then we'll come back to Zoom, then we'll go to council.
Feeling much better, though, yeah. Honorable Mayor and City Council, I just wanted to make a couple of short comments. I, myself, and I can only speak for myself, have felt on days when I look up at that 15th Street sign, I'm like, is there a sign there? The white is, is a little bit challenging for me on a cloudy day, that's all I can speak to. I do think the blue is typically a different color than our blue skies, so that stands out for whatever reason, or maybe I'm just used to it, so I'll leave it at that. And I just, when, Mayor Montgomery, when you mentioned digital, I thought, wow, what a, what a great idea, I just, because when I'm looking, seven feet tall is, wow, that's really big, and I'm almost six feet tall, and that, whatever's happening up here will be really hard for me to see, and a lot of people aren't as tall as I am, so I just, you know, seven feet tall just sounds really, really tall. And as far as the poles having the signs, if they're also seven feet tall on a, on a light post, and I worry about the wind resistance, it sounds like a lot of energy and a lot of potential money being put into state, having to stabilize something that could potentially, it's been windy in Manhattan Beach for the last two or three years, that could potentially be damaged in the wind. So, things to think about, maybe smaller sizes, potentially digital, just thoughts, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here not to be at, oh, there he is, Mr. Burton?
I'm not sure why it's only Rita and I talking. Just a couple of comments on signage, one, again, I concur with Rita on the white, the white's hard to see. And Councilmember Haworth, I like the MB branded font, and I'm not sure how to make it all fit, but somehow, as you get older, and things start getting closer together, it gets harder to see. And to Councilmember Napolitano, I was not, as a resident downtown, I was not surveyed, I would support Ms. Lampkin in her efforts, I am not one of the 32 that disapproved that, so.
Thank you, sir.
I thought I saw your name on that.
No, that was another Burton.
He was my friend.
Keep telling her that.
These meetings are recorded, by the way.
Anything else here in the chambers to speak? How about Zoom, Martha?
Close public comment, council, we'll start with Councilwoman Haworth.
Just a comment first, and I want, actually, Katie, if you could stand up and corroborate what I'm about to say, if it's true, Ms. Kappa brought up the seven-foot, you know, tall signs and looking up, but they, when we walked around with the mock-up, it's, the lettering and the wayfinding isn't seven, isn't up that high, is that correct?
Yeah, the, the map sort of is at eye level for me.
Eye level.
And then the text is below it, it just says "Directory" up at the top.
The directory.
Yeah, which is supposed to be viewed from far away, so that you know that that's a directory.
Okay, so, not that that, you know, maybe they're still too big, but just to understand that, you know, it's not like that. And those are, the seven-foot tall signs are not on street poles, correct?
No, they're, they're all, they're all supposed to be freestanding.
Right, and that's the stuff that you would, you know, engineer into the ground and make sure, okay, great, just wanted to clarify that for the time being. I have lots of thoughts about the font and the color, and I'm not sure yet, eager to hear from my colleagues.
Councilor Napolitano?
Thank you, Honorable. I'm not in favor of changing the color, I get that some people can't see it, I drive street Manhattan Beach Boulevard every day, and I can see it just fine, so it's not a problem, I don't know who's the problem for, we've gotten some response. I think people don't like change, and I get that. As far as visibility and meeting traffic standards and everything else that does that, I think the logo looks better on that, and I think the logo distinguishes, helps distinguish Manhattan Beach and the signage from a lot of other places. The blue, the logo is the reverse, the white against the blue, I don't like that color blue that's in here, so if that's the suggested alternative, don't like it, so I would stick with the white on that. As for the rest of signage, I guess, you know, I wasn't looking to make things bigger and more, I want less, and I'd rather, you know, there will be a net reduction, some areas, but it seems like we're making up for that by making them bigger, seven-foot on poles, seven-foot wayfinding, I really don't like the city identity sign at 20 feet and vertical, I think that's difficult to read, frankly. I would rather just put the logo out there with Manhattan Beach without the redundancy of the lettering above that, and make it a nice, smaller, lower-key entryway signs along Rosecrans at Manhattan Beach Boulevard, at Sepulveda, not a 20-foot monument sign that's vertical, I think that's horrible. The parking identity, the freestanding signs, I just think those are way too big, I'd rather put the signage to the similar size that's on our, our street signs now, no bigger than what's on our street, our poles now. You know, you want larger type, put it on the parking lots themselves, but those huge monument signs are way beyond the scale that I think that we should be having. You talk about small-town feel, that, to me, is not small-town at all. So, I'm not in favor of a lot of the size of these signs, and overall, I want a net reduction in signs, I don't want to clutter up sidewalks, I think we should declutter our sidewalks, take away a lot of unnecessary no-parking signs that are out there now, we don't need to have as many as we do, a lot of this is just overkill to me. Thank you, Honorable.
Can I ask him a question?
Wait, wait till we get through them, conserve it for when we get through, we're gonna get through here for a while.
Councilman Lesser?
I was very much in favor of this project at its beginning because of all of the cluttered signage that we saw throughout the city, and if anything, you would pick up on where Councilmember Napolitano left off, we were having lots of signage, and it was taking away from our small-town feel. So, I also recognize that this is a collaborative process, and it involves aesthetic choices that every one of us might have different feelings about, but this is a collaborative process as well. So just to go through my list, and then we will come together, collaboration, hopefully at the end of this process, I would be in support of the revised font, mainly because there needs to be this basic information on our wayfinding signage. I agree with Mayor Pro Tem Franklin about having the blocks on the signage, which would only be possible if we have a more condensed font, so I'm in support of that. The color, I don't like the white signs, I can't tell you just aesthetically and also practically, I'm the, you ask where some of these comments came from, I didn't prompt any discussion from the older adult community, I serve as the council liaison to the senior advisory committee, this was a comment that was brought up to me by a bunch of older adult residents, they don't like the white, they have trouble seeing it, notwithstanding the fact that there are big block letters on it, I would be in favor of using, keeping the white perhaps in our, there's a name for it, it's the portfolio or the, the master plan itself, but for street signs, because that's what my understanding is, this is going to lead to a fundamental change of all of our street signs, I like the blue, I welcome a different shade of blue that's maybe consistent with what has long been our street sign color, but it's part of the character of our community, and I suspect we might hear from many more residents if we seek to change that color, and granted, some just don't like change, I think that's a fair comment, but for me, it's something that I really like about this community, for me, it's part of our small-town character, what is this color, and it's consistent with other communities that have their own colored street sign. Is this our biggest issue in our community? No. But is it an aesthetic issue that I personally feel and share with other residents? Yes. Other issues, I support the idea of a smaller size of the directory, I agree with Councilmember Napolitano on that, is a larger scale, and I just, I recognize that the current directory downtown in front of the kettle is large, but of course, it's at an angle, and it's somewhat closer to horizontal as opposed to straight up seven feet, so it may be, may be a bit large, and I'd support something smaller. Same too with the parking sign and Councilmember Napolitano's comments there, I'd support a smaller pole, a pole sign, or a smaller-scale self-standing sign. I like the idea of the symbol, actually, I was gonna mention the staff recommendation to revert to the black and white of the logo, as opposed to what looks sort of like a prison under the pier with the, with the pylons, there was a request from staff for direction on changing the black and white logo, I believe that's one action item for tonight. Those are my comments for now.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor Pro Tem Franklin?
Yes, thank you. I, I agree with my colleague, Councilmember Lesser, I like the blue, people that I've talked with are just having trouble with that white. The other thing too, is we have decades and decades and decades of brand identification with the blue street sign, and in fact, it has become a wayfarer tool. Ours are blue, Hermosa's are brown, you know exactly when you're in Hermosa Beach, and then Redondo, I believe, is green, okay, and they might, you know, and they have a little icon, you know, on the left side, or on the pole side of the, of the sign. So, the new logo is fine, find a color that works with it, it just, I have a little bit of difficulty, and, I mean, let's face it, maybe it's because it's summer, you know, it's busy out there, and people coming in and not knowing where they're going, and they have to stop or slow down, it is backing up traffic on Highland, and on Manhattan Beach Boulevard, and on Manhattan Avenue, because people can't quite see clearly where they want to go. So they're gonna know they're in Manhattan Beach here, but out in the residential areas when you go transition from one city to the other. But the value of that blue sign is the fact that it identifies Manhattan Beach, and I want to hold on to that, because I think it is valuable, and it is distinctive, and it will help people get around. In terms of the directory, in, in times like this, I'm gonna default to, you know, because I served on the downtown business association, Business and Professional Association, there are the people that are there every single day, looking out there, seeing what's working, seeing what's not, if they say they like, you know, the high sign, and, and they like it, and they like the positions, I'm gonna go by that. And they're gonna be useful, they're gonna be up to date, they're gonna be updated frequently, more frequently than we're doing it now. I like the fact of getting rid of those big, chunky pieces of concrete and open that up so people can sit there, the Hyperion serenaders, the fireworks can go ahead and sit there, you know, and play Christmas tunes, so, and then I also feel, you know, again, going to item number 14, I'm really concerned about the local traffic, traffic network bike pass, it's just gonna produce clutter. I agree with Councilmember Napolitano, I really want to reduce clutter, I think there's way too many signs. And we go through, I just pointed out something, the old, what was the trolley that went back and forth, and there was a schedule board and everything like that on Manhattan Avenue, and that was just like maybe a couple of months ago that we got rid of it, and that hasn't been here for a long time, so let's get, let's pare that down, let's be a little bit more judicious with our use of signs, thank you.
Councilor Haworth?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Napolitano, I had a couple of clarifying questions from some of your comments, I may agree with them, who knows. You talked about the 20-foot-tall kind of entrance sign for Manhattan Beach, is that, and I think it's page 436 or something, that tall?
Page 466, I believe, it's on the far-left side, upper-left.
Yeah, okay, I agree with you. When you talked about the parking sign, is it the standalone vertical parking sign?
Yeah, I don't know why we need that or where.
Yeah, okay, again, just clarifying, I agree with you, but you're okay having parking, like a parking sign next to, like, the one where it has the two variations of Sepulveda, and then it has a parking little...
That's fine, to me, we replace like with like, though, I don't want to add signs, there are parking, there are signs for where parking lots are now on our light poles, just change those.
Okay, but, I'm just clarifying those comments. I agree with you, Councilmember Napolitano, on the white sign, even as I look at the, this, the presentation, I, I find it easier to read. I do think it's about change, and I don't, I understand that is, we love holding on to nostalgic things, but people very quickly will know, oh, you're in Manhattan Beach, so the signs are white, now you're in Hermosa, and the signs are brown, I mean, it doesn't matter if our signs are blue and theirs are brown, or ours are white and theirs are brown. I mean, what I love about our white signs and black lettering and the logo, I mean, that logo is gorgeous, especially with the added black outline, it really will pop. So that becomes what we recognize about Manhattan Beach, and it's, it's really, I think, so fresh and beautiful. I want to, I agree with you, Council, our Mayor Pro Tem Franklin, I sit on the downtown business, our Manhattan, downtown Business and Professional Association, and they are very excited about these directories, because they need all the help they can get, having, you know, people find them. We, you know, the restaurants, the businesses, and this is something we can do to help the people who come to visit, and maybe even some locals. I was at the home, not the hometown fair, g'golly, the farmer's market, and it was really fun, and it was fun to talk to residents, and some people said, oh, I don't need this, and they look at it and say, oh, well, that's over there, that was, that was interesting. And there were actually quite a few visitors at the market who actually needed the directory right then and there, that was very fun. So, I, I will support those directory, the downtown and north end directory signs, yeah, they may be a little large, but maybe they're not, maybe once they're in, it'll be, you know, people will get used to them. And I just wanted, the reason I was asking the questions, Councilmember Napolitano, I do want to encourage parking wayfinding when we can, because that's when traffic backs up, when people are looking for parking. So, like the white signs, I'm sad about the font, but I, you know, I know we can't have giant signs, but, and, you know, it is what it is. Now, I want to caution all of us, I know we want to minimize signage, we want to declutter, we want to clean it up, but, you know, there's still gonna be other signs around that say, library and city hall parking, you know, no alcohol on the baseball fields, now, they will eventually be in our, you know, our branded colors and our branded font, but they're still gonna, like, if you go down, there's, what about the no parking on Wednesday from 8:00 to 9:00, there's still gonna be a lot of signs, these don't just magically take away all the signs, I wish they did. I remember former Mayor Mitch Ward was really big on sign pollution, I think he called it. So, it's, it's not a magic solution, but if you look at, in our materials, you will see that we've just had so many signs over the years, and it's just a mess because they're not all the same font, they're not all the same color, they're not, so we'll start replacing them, and it will be better. So, I like the white signs, I like, I mean, I think they... I think they are, personally for me, easier to see. I agree that I would vote for the directory signs, and there you go.
Sure?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll try to wrap up here before Councilperson Napolitano gives his final comments. I remember this coming back to council in 2017, and Steve and I were, this is the sixth meeting, I take that back, sixth meeting talking about it. So I started with the simple comment, brevity is the soul of street signs. All these comments here, I'm with Steve, I don't, I, there's so much signage out there. How many go to a different city and don't use GPS in your car or your phone? I don't look at the street numbers. Most cities don't have street numbers. If you do, the, the signs are missing. So I'd rather go with less than more as well on the block numbers. I also like the fact that we have the enlarged font, that if you shorten it, so be it. I don't want to enlarge it. Perfect reason why we should change Sepulveda back to what it should be, Pacific Coast Highway, PCH, not Sepulveda. Stolen it out there. And I heard that Jill said the survey said 32 respondents, 27 more than we had for our budget meetings. But you know, people's priority are in this city. And for the street signage, I would say this, I could change every single color of the rainbow on our street signs, pink for Councilman Haworth, and you know what? Some will complain about every color we put. Green, blue, pink, they'd light us up and say, what are you guys thinking over there? There's no way. So you know what? If you're going to stick with white, stick with white. I'd love to go back to the blue, but if every time we kick the can, every different council changes every two years, the next council will change it to pink, or green, or blue. Pick one, and let it go through, and then worry about it. But it is important that we illuminate, as Director Lee talked about, our major traffic street signs. Consistency with our street signs illuminated, number one. I'm not sure if 15th and, and Highland would qualify. I would, I would light that one up, because it's right in front of City Hall. I would illuminate that one, because of where it's located, as opposed to just major traffic streets. Although you stand here on a weekend, that is a major traffic intersection. 15th and Highland qualifies as a major traffic intersection. That's one I would illuminate. Same with Highland and MBB. They don't qualify as a major traffic arterial, to Eric's credit, wherever he is, a traffic engineer. But those are where I see traffic backing up. To Mayor Pro Tem's point about traffic backing up, it backs up every year I've been here. I could change the color of the sign, any color you want. Traffic will not change based on the traffic sign, ever. Those of us that remember the fight we had in '08, '09, Bruce, when we tried to convince the council, and we did finally, to illuminate the P for parking at Melonx. That was a fight, because that council was stuck in 1980s. Same as our downtown directory board. It's 1980, we had 3M stickers. But to Jill's point, infrastructure's not there today to, at a high cost, to illuminate a digital directory, which would make sense. 43 years later, we're using 3M tape on that. I get it, the cost is too high. But North End does not have that problem. They can't hide behind the cost to change that 1980 sign to digital. That's a perfect spot for digital directory, and see what happened up there. So I would look at that as an option. Past that, I think my point has been made. I think the enlarged font that Captain showed us is best we can. Continue with the white. Illuminate what we can. Consider 15th and Highland, 15th and Highland MBB as alternate. If they're not lit up, Highland's, if they're lit up at, at Highland and MBB already, I like the, the one you have here for now, but illuminate that intersection. Past that point, I can't see what else I would change. Past that point to going forward. But we need to stay consistent with our signage. So let's sit like our tree master plan, Steve, and our mantinization. They change it every two years. Whenever it gets consistency, I find, I said, stop. Let it set for a little bit. Let's see what happens, pros and cons, and revisit it. You can't be kicking this can with street signs every two years. Council changes, the colors are going to change. Let's put it out there, finish it. If you want to change the color to pink or green down the road, be my guest. Or blue, Steve and I will be somewhere else by then. You can change the color any way you want. But I think we're getting the point. I don't want to spend money back and forward. We've hired this super design, Perkins Design, since 2015? 2015. So we've consistently stuck with the same people, because council has changed our minds so many times. At least they're consistent. And I thought they were, they were good people, they brought great ideas to the city. Everything that's suggested so far has proven to be the right direction. Stick with it, stick with our colors, elimination, and then go from there. So, Commissioner Napolitano, you go first, and I'll go back to Councilmember Lesser.
Thing, yeah, just a couple of points, because, and you covered the one point, backing up traffic. We have zero input that traffic is backed up for colors of signage. It backs up twice a day, every day, and it backs up every summer. It's backed up every summer since I was born. So that has nothing to do with the color of the street signs. And for information, Redondo has changed the color of their signs to blue now from green. So there's that. As far as, again, but in terms of change, and what you like, what you don't like, it's subjective. I'll grant you that. It's not dangerous, it's subjective, though. And, you know, I went for white, we got too blue, we had too white. I defer to the mayor's decision as the swing vote on that. I would have a bigger issue, less with the color, than with the soulless font that is there. Now, is it legible? Yes. Is it, it is, well, future, but the other ones, it's soulless, too. I mean, they're modern, they're legible, all that. But if, if you want identity, right, Hermosa has identity because of the font. Santa Barbara has identity because of the font. This is an off-the-shelf font, which makes it very useful, but we've gone down this road already. So again, are we going to change? We looked at lots of fonts going into this. We didn't find anything better that also suited traffic standards and everything else. So it's not, doesn't make me warm and fuzzy, but it gets the job done. And that's what all these things do. And that's, the bottom line is, again, but again, I would, I would request, though, before any, I, I'm fine with the other changes that were suggested, but before things like the parking identity, freestanding signs go in, or any city identity signs go in at the entrances, that those come back to council. And as far as the, the street signs, the pier change, the downtown and north-end directories go, I'm, I'm fine with that. I, I would caution anything, put seven foot on top of a pole, though. Again, I would replace, we have parking signs on poles now. Those are the, why would we increase the size of those, and require more engineering and more review of constructability plans for that? Replace the size that are there now. We don't need to go beyond that. Thank you, hon.
Thank you. Councilmember Lesser, I'll give my comment and go back up.
I was going to try and take a stab at making a motion, so we're not just talking, but we're giving staff direction, but I also wanted to break this up. We have some individual pieces, because I certainly don't want my fingerprints on the white signs, and maybe someone else does not want their fingerprints on something else. But moreover, I mean, I want to respect the process and just getting clear direction to staff where there is consensus and move this forward. But that would be my proposal. I did start a motion. I'll, perhaps, I welcome a collaboration in terms of styling exactly what the issues are.
Make your motion, I'll come behind you.
Well, I would just start by going through the list, and I want to make sure I'm using the right template of what the decisions are, because that's not as clear in the staff report. But I'm looking at page seven of the staff report, which, or the PowerPoint, which references the updates to the master plans, including the first being the alternative font and logo for street signs.
I'm sorry, suggestion, maybe I should make my comment, then you can hold your motion. Captain, let me get my question answered first, I might follow through. Number, Councilperson Napolitano, we're using the Spartan MB font now.
Yes.
Perfect. That's what Steve was saying, your question mark is changing the Spartan font, or leave it alone?
At this point, I think we have to leave it alone.
Okay, second, to, to Franklin's comment was about the local travel network. Anything we do tonight, change the next item on the agenda?
No.
No matter what we do, pink, green, whatever, it makes a difference to them.
I got lots to say about that, too.
Okay. So, with that said, Councilmember Lesser, please.
Again, my goal is just to try and move this forward, and come up with some process for doing so. So my motion would be, and it's open to council comments and proposed revisions, is to approve the proposed revised font and logo for street signs. And that would be the first motion. And that would be changing from, what is it, the Spartan MB to the Futura PT Conmium? Is that right?
Yes.
Not my favorite either, but I understand the reason why they proposed it. So I just throw that out there as a motion, and maybe others don't agree.
Can I clarify?
Sure.
I pressed a button, anyway.
Go ahead.
Because I think Councilmember Napolitano, it's, or you had said, stick with the Spartan, correct?
That was my question.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I agree with, yeah. Which is not going to the Futura.
Oh.
That's the question, that's, he's proposing going to Futura, which is what staff is recommending.
To fit more content on the signs, but I welcome hearing a different presentation.
I mean, it depends on how much we have to squeeze in there.
Just for conversation's sake, what I appreciate that staff didn't fully articulate and reference, was, to the extent you're going to have a street sign that says Manhattan Beach Boulevard, to the extent you're having to be able to fit it, you have to abbreviate beach, abbreviate BLVD, it, it becomes an entire abbreviated sign in large font, which makes just a little bit confusing. But that's...
Well, he's deciding, I, I'm not a fan of changing it. I believe lesser's more. The 15th Street, an example on the slides, 15th Street with the Spartan font. I'm not a fan of adding the street block numbers. I think we all use phone, you use GPS in your car. You don't look at what, you punch in where you want to go, takes you right there. I don't remember the last time I actually trusted a street sign and said, what block am I in? Who does that? Besides, if Franklin...
Thank you, Ally.
Unless you're a large city, if you're in LA, I get it. You're in LA, I understand that. We're not LA. We pride ourselves on not being LA.
I will let someone else make the motion then on the font, which is the first question.
Anyone got a motion on the font?
I withdrew it.
So you want to push your button and say you want to talk about it? And your motion is?
So my motion is to keep our font type as the existing Spartan.
Okay. No one else is moving, and I will second that. Any other comments? We can do them one at a time. We're going to go through the process one at a time, so everybody's on the same page.
Big, heavy-hitting issues, let's do it, yeah.
Voting screen, is that it? Or you want to do voice votes, please?
Right, no, there we go.
All right.
Motion passes four to one.
Okay, next item. Let's bring the next item up.
I may, I have a motion to replace the pier symbol with the one that staff recommended for brand consistency. And I'd like to also just put the inclusion of two-sided street name signs in that motion. Those are, I think, pretty easy.
Yes, so you want to revise the logo? What page is your revised logo on?
It's the one that doesn't look like a prison. It's, I mean...
That was an octopus.
Or an octopus.
Page 11.
Page 11. Boy, my, my, it's, I'm all messed up here in terms of, but...
Is page 480 of the overall report?
Yes, slide eight, slide 11 in the deck.
480, yeah.
Yeah, there you go. Thank you very much.
The bottom symbol is a replacement symbol.
Yes. So that takes care of those two.
So your proposal is to take the second, which is a replacement symbol?
Yes, the staff, so...
And what else?
And also to make the, the street signs two-sided, street names, that are illuminated.
Illuminated, two sides on intersections where we're deemed appropriate.
Yeah, so if they're illuminated. But, but even if it's not illuminated, won't it be two sides?
Yeah.
Should be.
It'll be reflective material.
Yes.
Okay.
Now, first, my Commissioner Haworth, and then second, my Councilwoman Lesser, voting screen, please. All right. Motion passes five to one.
Motion passes five to one.
Next item up?
As long as we're talking about street signs before we get on to the business directory signs, I figure I might as well take one for my side, and that is, I propose to turn the street signs to blue. It doesn't have to be this shade, but it's consistent with the original master plan, to use the reverse coloration, so it's white on blue as the signage. Do I have a second?
First, Councilperson Lesser, and second, my Commissioner Franklin, this is to change the color back to blue. Just a question to staff. If the council has already decided to go with the color back to blue, what time delay we see to reorder all the blue signs and reset them back up?
We have not yet, so the, the street identity signs is phase two. So we have not, we have started putting the new signs in select locations, but we haven't wholesale purchased the white signs. So there would be no time delay, potentially making this change in the master plan. We would need to do that, and then projects moving forward could use the blue signs.
So no ordering delay, because we haven't ordered any more than our signs that we see out there now?
Correct.
And the delivery time today, we kept it whatever color, is how far in advance?
How long to receive the fabricated signs?
Yes.
It's six weeks. I'm, I'm not sure exactly what that delivery time is right now.
No delay chain, supply chain issues.
Oh, sorry.
Just to clarify, when, when we eventually place that order, that, that could be the timing, but that, the, the street name signs is phase two, which is some years out. Right now, we're focusing on phase one, which is directional signage in the business districts.
So no matter what...
So I want to make sure that the expectation is clear, that in six weeks, we're not going to have new signs.
So it could be 2024, before we see the changes on street signage?
So we have to look at the CIP that was adopted. I believe it's some years out until we get to phase two. Is that correct?
I think it's three years out.
So, so there is some, there is some runway before we get to blue signs throughout the community.
Understood. Thank you for that. Councilwoman Lesser?
And I appreciate you asking that question, Mr. Mayor, because it was my understanding, and it should have been articulated earlier, that the white signs up are merely examples. They're not the new palette, and the intended replacement of all our street signs is in the future. But to the extent we give staff some direction now, my understanding is that would be helpful. Also, I'd love to frame this in keeping the signage as it is. That's the goal of this motion, to keep it as blue, as opposed to changing it to white.
Go ahead.
Factual correction, though, there was a vote taken, and this was the color chosen in a public meeting. It wasn't, we're not, you're changing what was already approved.
Correct.
Okay, well, you said earlier that this is to keep the blue.
But it's to keep the coloration. I didn't reference the vote.
Okay, I have a...
But your point is well taken, and I don't mean to belittle it.
Here's a question. The white, the prototypes that we have up, are they the same material and coating, et cetera, that the final signs will be? In other words, could the final signs be more reflective, and therefore, you know, like that, could, would the white be any more reflective? Or is this the final material?
On the major intersections, we will be installing the illuminated signs. So if you drive by MBB and Peck, you'll see what the future signs will look like. The ones in downtown are reflective, not illuminated.
Okay.
So those would be switched out to illuminated.
Could you repeat your motion?
Sorry, Director Franklin, go ahead.
Yeah, excuse me, I just brought up, so are there examples of the white sign illuminated now?
Yes, at, at Manhattan Beach Boulevard and Peck Avenue.
And Peck, okay.
Very bright, and well-read from a distance.
Really?
With, with engineers, Eric did his great job of lowering them, so you travel westbound, even when the sun is out, and almost down to where your eye level is, you can see them traveling west. I drive it every day. Same as going eastbound, and they are definitely bright. I remember they're new, I understand, it hasn't worn out yet, about to see air, but it is definitely bright. You see them, I feel my, I feel somewhat remorse for the person that lives on the other side of him, because his light is right at his living room level. I'm sure Director Lee's going to hear from him soon, under our pilot project. No matter what the color is, he's going to be calling you, it could be pink, he'd still let you know about it.
I like all the references to pink signs. I, I see the future.
In your honor.
Yeah, as it should be.
But you have a...
Any more questions?
No, that's it. You have a first and a second from Councilwoman Lesser. Director Franklin, your motion is to keep the signs blue, not the ocean, to keep the signs blue.
Which are, if I may, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I think in the original master plan, that's why we brought up slide 13, and it's also in slide 12, it shows blue and white. White can still be used. It's just the principal sign would be blue. Blue would be the signs that would be retained for street signs.
What does that mean, white can still be used? I mean, you either pick one or the other. You want consistency.
No, white lettering.
I would...
No, he's not saying that.
No, he's talking about the two signs. He's talking about a white sign and a blue sign.
This is really getting in the...
We could put one of each on each pole.
Can we call for, I call for the question.
Yes.
Good.
I think we're good on this one. Our comments have been made. We're ready for a vote on the motion as to whether to keep the signs blue or not. That is a motion.
Do it for the children.
Let, let's be clear, though, not all of them are blue now.
Correct.
Some are green.
Correct.
Okay.
He wants them to be blue. So get the word keep. I think the, the offending word is keep.
Yes.
Do it for the children.
Consistency. All right. Who else has that motion? Councilman Holworth?
So I, wait, I don't need to, I don't need to make a motion because there, there's no, there's no decision. I don't, I want to keep them white.
So no motion?
I don't need a motion for that, but.
Decision was made.
That decision, we made that decision.
Years ago.
Years ago. I was there too. Okay. But I do have a motion to approve the business district directory signs for both downtown and north Manhattan Beach.
Yeah, first and second amendment, can we look, the friendly amendment, can we ask that we look at North MBID for illuminated, I'm sorry, for a digital directory, not a 1980s-type directory? Maybe Director Lee will tell us her captain. Maybe it's not feasible, that there is no underground power to, to place a digital directory in North End.
In the North End? There would, there's not currently power there, so that, that would be a much more expensive.
We're stuck in the same spot we're in at downtown.
Um.
As far as.
In terms of power, yes.
I withdraw the friendly amendment, understanding we're not there yet.
All right.
You have first and a second. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Enter, sir.
Motion passes five.
Maybe by 2029, we'll get to the point we have power about location.
I cracked myself up.
Councilman Holworth, you got one more?
Well, no, I just, I had a question, and I just wanted to make sure, and this first bullet, or the first decision staff wanted us to make, that we did, the motion was that we approved the logo with the black kind of border around it, and that, but we kept the font as Spartan. Was that, that's what we.
Is that a question to her?
It's a que, I, I asked my, we had that vote, and I just wanted to clarify that, understood? Okay.
Well, I, I understood that the font is going to stay the Spartan MB. I don't believe there was a vote on the logo changes, but was that included in that motion?
No, there was a vote on the logo.
That, that was included in there.
Recommended logo replacement type was voted on.
We are recommending.
But, oh, and what we did, I know what I wanted to clarify for staff. You said, and I'm not sure it was part of the motion, we don't need the block numbers on there. And that, yeah, I said you, I meant you. So that was part of the motion as well.
I thought you were talking to Steve. Okay.
No, no.
So exclude the block numbers on the signage was the, what she meant, clarification on the.
Or was that, that not part of the motion?
Wait, I didn't. Does that mean we're not going to have?
Hi.
Take a message. I'm not here.
Turn the side of your phone. Hold that button on the side. George can help you. You got it? Okay. Welcome 2023.
But that, that was, that's left hanging out there because you mentioned it, and I, I can't remember who made that motion, and, but I just want to be sure that we're clear on what we did.
I think it was whether or not everything can be fit in or not.
Yeah.
Right.
With the Spartan font.
So my comment was, because of brevity, can we exclude the block numbers on going forward on the street signs?
Right.
Want to make that a separate motion?
No, I, I want to be sure that we understand what we voted on, because we obviously are having this discussion now, because we discussed, we kept Spartan, and staff has said, hey, block numbers and stuff won't really fit with Spartan. And then you said, and I, I agree with you, actually, eh, we don't need block numbers. So what did we actually vote on?
My recollect, if I may, because you're ahead of me, is I thought that this was part of the reason why I voted against that motion, because I would rather have a smaller font that includes the block numbers, even though I respect the, the majority of council taking a different position, right? So that was in that earlier motion as I understood it, because I think it is still, many people don't always have their phone. I mean, you go on why I voted that way.
You're saying it was in the earlier motion, which I'm fine with.
I believe so.
I'm going to clarify that. I'll make my own motion about that. And once we're through, I'll make my own motion. Councilman Palatano?
You know, there was a brief moment in time where I thought this was going to be the shortest meeting ever. That just went out the, the window. So I would reiterate, I would make a motion to, oh, wait a minute.
Go ahead. I'll withdraw.
Someone's making a motion. Well, I would, I would make a motion along the lines of what I said before, where I think that the size of the signage should be like for like from what's out there now, and that if the, the monument signs and the identity signs at the entrance of the cities should come back to council with a redo.
That's separate from that, but yes.
Nothing to do with block numbers.
Did you make that motion?
I didn't have anything to do with block numbers.
Good, I'm clear about that.
Make that motion.
First, my Councilman Palatano, second, my Councilman Holworth.
Glad you did that.
On this item only.
Okay.
Glad you did that.
Monuments.
Yeah, the, yeah.
Motion passes five to zero.
Attorney Frank, before I do anything else, you go first. Your comments are out.
Oh, yes. So, so I just, I mean, I was looking at this picture on page 462 of the Spartan font with, and it has the block number on it. So I was figuring that the block number was going to be on, was part of the vote.
Oh, yeah, that one does have it on there.
I'll make it easier and make a motion. No one else wants to do it. I'll make the motion one way or the other about the block numbers. My motion that I'll make is clear, stick with the Spartan font, keep it white, drop the block numbers. That way, you want brevity, you get consistency across the board, you don't clutter it up. If you're driving by at 30 miles an hour, you, it's hard to read. Block number's going to be a number six font. For people that actually believe you can read the font numbers at that speed, I'd love to see them drive by and tell them what block number they are.
Oh, you're going to call for my mom.
Yeah.
Maybe there are. I'm sorry, Councilman Lesser, first, then Attorney Frank.
So in keeping with the spirit of Councilmember Palatano's note, this was hoping to be the shortest meeting. A question for the city engineer, if I could. Is there a best practice or a guide that relates to including blocks on street signs?
There are best practice. I, maybe I could defer to traffic engineer on this one. I'm, I, I think both are okay. They're both allowed. I'm not sure if there's a study or.
Range. Is there any guidance here, or is it truly just a subjective decision?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor of the City Council. People seeing you more tonight. With regard to the, the block numbers, it's generally standard practice to have them on the street name signs for local roads. And that gives the post office a decision about whether it's a north or an east or a south type numbering system. On the large signs that go over the mast arms of the traffic signals, you don't have to have them on there. And that saves space and time, or space on, on the sign for other things.
So one question there. With that being said, do you have the block numbers on every single block away from any intersection? Do you have the block numbers on every single block, every single street sign?
Currently, we do on all of our streets.
Do you recommend that as a source?
I do because our city has north numbering and south numbering. And so the N and the S is actually very important for that.
With that, I withdraw the motion. I'll defer to an expert. Thank you for that. So we're almost on track to the shortest meeting ever. With that, any more motions? I'm sorry, Attorney Frank, do you have another question?
Well, I just, so do we have to vote on it?
No, I withdrew it.
Okay. So then we are going to have block numbers.
Yes.
But Spartan font.
Spartan font.
Yep.
Two-sided.
Make it happen.
Okay.
And then the motions on this? Do we need any direction? Do you need any more direction on your side?
That's my list. Yes, that was part of the font.
Hopefully, well done. Hopefully, the next council will not kick the can and change things for you. And then down the road, so residents can hear you tonight when we do this. And when you finally order, don't expect street color sign to change anyway until 2024. Is that correct?
No.
Hold on, hold on. Better answer.
Say it again.
Please answer, and we can all hear you.
Say that again, the street.
Those streets signage will not change for the entire city to 2024.
Well, yes and no. The, the project to do a wholesale switch out is not for three years, but we do have some specific intersection projects that will switch to what's currently in the master plan.
Okay, so there's some, some partial change out between the next year?
Yes, specifically our Embats project that's coming through, through will change out 10 major intersections in the city.
And the rest will happen two years down the road after that.
And the rest will be after that.
The vast majority of residential streets.
There we go.
And so in none of the residential streets. It would be all just major intersections.
Perfect. That way, when the media gets this, we're not changing signs tomorrow, because you're not going to get calls about that, that we're changing signs tomorrow on next door. We've ruined the city by changing the street color and wiping out what they know where they're going. So make sure it's clear. Everybody understands that on the wrap-up minutes, we're not changing things now. 24, 25, 26, and go on from there.
But thereafter, it's open season.
Councilman Lesser, yes.
It'll be five years later.
So seriously, I, I actually do have a question for the city attorney. The staff report indicates that the second request is a determination that this activity is not a project as defined under section 15378 of the state sequa guidelines. Do you need a motion to that effect?
Yes, that the city council concurs with that determination.
So move.
Good job.
You want to make your motion clear to them so they can hear it?
I heard it.
But everybody else at home can hear it. They heard it.
There's a request for a determination that this activity, of dealing with our wayfinding signage and giving direction, is not a project as defined under section 15378 of the state sequa guidelines.
Perfect. First, my Councilman Lesser, second, my Councilman Holworth, voting screen, please.
Motion passes five to zero.
Well done. Brutal, but needed. Appreciate that. We're going to take a five-minute break and come right back.
Painful.
Consideration of South Bay Cities Council of Government, South Bay COG, request to incorporate South Bay COG Local Travel Network with comments from Comm. Dev. Director, Mr. Conian.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council Members. I want to introduce Eric Zandvliet, our Traffic Engineer, to present this item, but I also would like to introduce David Legere with the South Bay Cities COG, who is available for questions after our presentation. Thank you.
Welcome, Dave.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Members of the Council. I'm Eric Zandvliet, City Traffic Engineer, and I must apologize if I did not get the Hawaiian shirt memo.
Ooh.
We'll go through the slides fairly quickly because I know you have some questions. And so by way of quick background, the South Bay COG received a Caltrans Sustainability Planning Grant to create a local travel network and develop a number of routes. They did a lot of public outreach through different websites and a story map. It was very interesting on the website there. In 2021, the South Bay COG passed a resolution supporting the LTN, is what we're calling it. 2022, the COG hired a consultant to help develop specifications for that and a logo. The PPIC was given a presentation in December of last year, and they also support the local travel network. The South Bay COG has subregional funds. They have a call for projects every year, and this LTN project has a placeholder for the city of Manhattan Beach if we so choose to move forward with a funding grant application for that. You might ask, what is a local travel network? It's an identification of slow-speed streets. In the South Bay area, the South Bay COG identified 243 miles of it. It supports zero-emission micro-mobility devices, bicycles, e-bikes, private scooters, neighborhood electric vehicles. We have a lot of those in our city. It's between neighborhoods and between the neighborhood and a destination. It's on low-speed streets. In Manhattan Beach, it would be on all 25 mile-an-hour streets or less. Whenever you have to cross a major road, it would be done at a traffic signal for their protection. Basically, you share the road with vehicles and bicyclists as you already do. And it's made up of a number of directional signs where you make a change in direction and sharrows. Why would we want to do this? Why would we want to help participate in this? This had been a request from South Bay COG that we participate in the LTN. Well, over 70% of the South Bay trips are three miles or less. That's certainly doable on these types of devices. It right sizes your ride, it helps reduce emissions, collision potential, and it supports e-bike and micro-mobility. When you drill down, the South Bay LTN network is on the map to your left. You look at the five cities, sorry, the three South Bay cities, and you take a look at phase one. This is phase one that's being proposed at this time. When we look down into the city of Manhattan Beach, this was developed through...
There's more phases?
Phase two would be Hawthorne, Torrance, and Rancho Palos Verdes and the rest.
There's not a phase two for Manhattan Beach?
Not for Manhattan Beach. We're the one and only phase for phase one. This is the proposed network for the city of Manhattan Beach that are, as I mentioned, they're all on local roads. Twelve of the 17.3 miles of it are already identified as bike routes in the city. So we're actually basically overlaying this on our bike route network. It does connect almost all of our local facilities, our parks, our city hall, as well as our schools. And so this could be used for bike routes for kids to get to school or get to the beach or for neighbors to get to other neighborhoods. We talked a lot in the last item about our wayfinding sign program. The intent for this is to not add more signs, is to include them in our wayfinding sign program already. And so, for instance, if you have a traffic signal and you need to show a change in direction for the local travel network, it would be something similar to the parking sign that would be on that pole. Or it could be incorporated including with that parking sign as well. If it's a directional sign, it would be included inside the wayfinding sign itself for the city and using the city's font for that. And then when you're at a local level, the signs are much smaller. And so say, for instance, imagine basically a parking sign, and it would have the South Bay Local Travel Network on it, the little turtle, and an arrow showing which way to go.
On which signs?
If we had a directional sign in the neighborhood for the local travel network.
So that would be an additional sign?
No, it would be, well, it would be on the same pole as something else. So we wouldn't be adding signposts.
Well, you'd be adding signs.
Would add a sign. In the city of Manhattan Beach, the local travel network actually supports our city's mobility plan and the goals for our mobility plan. It supports our BikeWay master plan by using the same roads as our bicycle network. It helps address these e-bike safety concerns that we've had lately. We help them use and direct them to low-volume, low-speed streets and not have that conflict between fast-moving cars on our major streets. It helps connect our community together. We can use the Measure M grant funds to actually fund the wayfinding signs that those signs are on. And there's no local match for these Measure M funds. The timeline's pretty simple. We're at a point now where the South Bay COG is asking for grant applications. They've placed, put a placeholder in for Manhattan Beach if we so choose to participate in it, and that would then be approved by Metro for those funds. These are subregional funds. These are directly used for the subregion itself. We don't have to compete for another region for that. As part of the LTN network, the South Bay network, sorry, the South Bay Cities and the local cities would participate in a bunch of different things to help this kick off, including ride-and-drive events, micro-mobility training. You can do e-bike training. You can do safety training for all of these things. And then getting the word out could be a bunch of different things. The PPIC had actually suggested putting a small QR code on the sign for the LTN so that you could actually get the network on your phone and use the phone as the way around.
If it's on a sign with something else on it in a neighborhood, that's going to be kind of high to use a QR code, isn't it?
So you bring up a good point. The PPIC asked that the signs be right-sized for the area. And so we're not talking seven-foot-tall signs. We're talking a very small sign, pedestrian-level sign. Because when you're going 10 or 15 miles an hour or even 20 miles an hour, you do not need big letters. You don't need a big sign to be able to be legible. You know, a car going 30 miles an hour is not going to care about the local travel network, and so they don't need to see the sign. So it's a smaller sign, you know, and maybe the QR code is at, you know, pedestrian-level for that. The next steps for this would be to discuss the LTN program and its applicability to the city. If it's approved, then we were asking that staff, we authorized staff to apply for the Measure M funds for the LTN program. And that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Cut off, Eric. I'm jumping in front here because I want to make sure I understand it. I apologize, though, you're trying to watch at home. Our printer printed on the right side of the page, I don't know what page number it is. I know it's 500 and something. But the page where it talks about the word multimodal signs, Eric, I don't know what number that is. We can't read it, but it's got the multimodal on it.
Okay.
Picture of the turtle. I don't know where that turtle is going to be on a slow speed, but okay. The rolling turtle. So let me ask you two questions. I understand no matching funds. The million-two, is that the maximum number that we have available in Manhattan Beach? Is that our, up to our money dedicated to us?
It's dedicated to the city of Manhattan Beach.
Up to million-two, that's good. And third, assuming they have an app, I can't believe they don't have an app yet, but if we do, and advertising you do, nothing about safety, which e-bike safety, I know my friend here, Frank, is going to be upset, if they do all this, talk about mobility, no mention of e-bike safety, nothing on their signage, if they have an app, they need to have, should have something about that somewhere, I'd imagine, on their signs or on their app.
Right. So the world is our oyster. We could include all of that.
Good. So I have, Councilman Blesser.
Could I have the route map be brought up, if I could? Because I had a question about one of the key pieces of the route. Maybe the next one after that, I suppose. Eric, you and I have discussed the northernmost crossing of Sepulveda Boulevard, and it appears, and you've confirmed, that it is envisioned to go underneath the Sepulveda Bridge, right?
Yes.
So that would mean that those slow-moving vehicles would need to get on the Veterans Parkway on the west, correct?
That's a choice we can make, yes.
But I'm just trying to think where else we allow vehicles on our Veterans Parkway beyond pedestrians on our chip path on the Veterans Parkway.
Right. That's a very good question. Thank you for the question. It would be a little bit different than that. So the bicycle route, the bicycle path for the mall has been built. It ends right at the end of the bridge. In fact, as part of the Measure M funding application, we could ask for an extension of that path on, you know, concrete or pavement to reach Valley or Ardmore Avenue so that we can make that connection for that bike portion, okay? It could be bikes only, or it could be NEVs, but we would then have bollards to prevent large vehicles from getting into the Parkway.
Well, that was going to be my question. I just wondered, are you not concerned as the traffic engineer of, within that space of the bridge underpass of slow-moving vehicles, which would include electric golf carts, for example, as well as pedestrians, as well as bicycles, as well as e-bikes, all together? And granted, they're not going to be, we don't anticipate a huge number all at once, but I'm just wondering if there isn't some concern about that many types of vehicles in that space?
Right. So we have thought about that already before. When we constructed the bridge undercrossing, it has separate areas for pedestrians, bicycles, and potentially areas for an NEV. So they could be separated as they go under the bridge.
Okay. I also wanted to ask, my understanding is there's a pilot presently in El Segundo. Are you familiar with that, or is that a question from Mr. Legere?
I can have David answer, but the quick answer is yes. El Segundo is already moving forward. They wanted to try out a pilot project in their, in a couple of their neighborhoods.
My understanding is that it had to do with signage as well as the routes, and that's why I'm asking about it. I'm wondering how they're addressing this issue that clearly you've heard, as Mr. Legere has heard, about our desire to not add signage and to consolidate and reduce.
Correct. And so I'll leave that to Mr. Legere.
Okay. Let me see if I have any more questions for you real quick. Just my concern about conflicts on roads on this route. We might wish some of these roads would be exclusively for slow-moving vehicles, but in fact, they're going to be shared roads. Have you signed off on every other part of this route in terms of its safety for slow-moving vehicles along with regular vehicles? Because as you know, we're a bit sensitive to road diets and slowing traffic.
Of course. So the answer is you'll never eliminate all risk for, between cars, vehicles, NEVs, bicycles, and pedestrians. The idea here is that these are the best roads that we have for those bicycles, for those e-bikes, for that, to minimize that risk and have the right crossings, the right locations in order to get across Sepulveda Boulevard, say, for instance, at Second and Eighth Street and not somewhere mid-block.
Okay. Can I ask Mr. Legere just about what the pilot entails as well as some larger issues about the purposes of the plan, just reiterating what the traffic engineer just described?
Sure. Thank you all. So El Segundo is, was very excited about the project. They wanted to move forward with a pilot ahead of the Measure M funding. And it was also a way to kind of figure out, is the best practice of X number of signs
And so you only have an NEV, for example, but it's about a thought of, do I need to get in my car to go to the grocery store down the street? Like Eric had mentioned, these modes are perfect for that, that type of mobility need. They're also more affordable, they're slower, so, and not so heavy. So if maybe you don't want to throw your 16-year-old into a full-size SUV, a smaller mode is good. It also allows seniors who might not feel comfortable getting behind a full-size vehicle anymore an opportunity to maintain their mobility and not have to rely on others to get to where they need to go. Additionally, GSG reductions, obviously. And it, it, once you kind of hit that critical mass, you could almost see a reduction in traffic. Because right now, 80% of our traffic is on 20% of our streets. And so if you get folks to kind of get in these smaller devices, which aren't safe for PCH or any of the major arterials that are going through the South Bay that folks normally make a local trip on, you kind of reduce the traffic load also. And so it's part of a longer-term goal. And to the safety question, the, this is one part of the local travel network, the infrastructure. The, the safety, the marketing, the other kind of maybe preferred parking in locations to encourage mode, mode change. It's all part of the larger kind of ecosystem of the local travel network. So this is just the infrastructure portion of it. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Well said. Thank you, sir. Our next question comes from, sorry, Steve, Paul Tano.
I'll pass.
Okay. Mayor Tim Franklin?
Okay. Thank you, and nice to meet you. So has any survey been done of the user destinations? You know, I, I understand, you know, about the short, short trips and things like that. And I've seen it and done it myself, so. But as far as overall, general user surveys, has any of those been accomplished?
There was a, a large outreach that was done through a, a website that was created for the LTN. David could speak to that. And there was questions asked at that time, where are you, where do you want to be, where do you want to go? The South Bay Cog also, and the consultants also asked the individual cities, for their experts, where the destinations would be.
Okay. So where, where do you think it is? I mean, like, I would guess the beach.
You would be wrong. This idea here is to connect neighborhoods to neighborhoods.
Yeah.
Okay? It's maybe people's homes to people's homes. It's an internal network for ourselves, for us to use. Okay? It's not for visitors necessarily, okay? They're gonna be taking a longer trip. It may be for school, going back and forth to school. It may be for a quick, you know, run to Manhattan Bagel or something like that. Those are, those are the trips we're talking about.
Right. Okay. Well, we're heavy users of the beach, I think. But I, I appreciate that. And, and I've actually seen this in operation with Surf PE, you know, the middle schoolers going down to the pier. And that's why I really like this, because we've gone from almost 100% big SUVs sitting there idling to zero SUVs. But sometimes two kids do a bike and all that sort of stuff. But it's all e-bikes going down there, which is great. That's the vision. So I've seen it, and it's great. So I, I mean, if you can go with me and, and, and say, yeah, the destination's the beach for people in Manhattan Beach. I only see like two points of entry to the, to the bike strand or to the bike path, okay? The one at 15th Street and Marine Avenue. And then I look at someone all the way over by Maricosta, or even, you know, Aviation and, you know, Peck Avenue, or even, you know, on Second Street in the Hill section. You have them going like north and then, you know, zigzagging and things like that.
Yeah, I understand. This is, this is not an exclusive road. It, you can enter and exit it at any point.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. And if we want to show that, the, you know, here's a beach entrance, we can show that too.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Because that was my concern, is that it really wasn't giving easy.
It's treated like a backbone, but then from that point, you can get, you know, to the last little stretch wherever you want to go.
There's no guardrails. It's a choice.
Well, no, no, I understand, but you're gonna be putting wayfinding and all that sort of stuff. You're gonna be putting out this map and people, and then there's hills.
Yes, there are.
Not every bike's an e-bike. And so that's okay. Someone coming from east of us entering into this would find a very circuitous path to get to the bike path. And then also too, there's limited entrances to the bike path. I mean, like where you're not taking it downstairs or things like that.
I will mention that this is not a final map in any way. As part of the grant funds, there would be design and construction, and so our design installation. We have the chance, and we can bring this back to City Council to fine-tune it, and so that's not a problem.
Great. Okay, good, good to hear. And so you said it was directional signs and charos. So we'll actually be putting back, well, once the paths are determined, then we'll be putting down the charos, the charo symbols, and the directional signs.
Correct. We have charos on about 10 miles of our city already.
Great. Okay, great. Thank you.
Councilmember Paul Tano?
Thank you, Eric. So we already have a safe routes to school program, right?
Yes.
Okay. We've already put down, as you said, 10 miles of charos, right? And do we think people don't know how to move from neighborhood to neighborhood now in Manhattan Beach?
I won't say no.
Well, as it was said earlier, you know, people are gonna do what they already know to do. I mean, in terms of sustainability, mobility, people can do all these things now, there already are, with e-bikes and everything else. Do we think they're gonna go buy a electric cart because we adopt this? Do we think that they're gonna buy electric bike because of this? Or anything else? I mean, they're gonna choose the mobility based on affordability, desire, and everything else, not because of this program. Because I, when I look at the map to Councilmember Franklin, Mayor Port Tim Franklin's point, right? There's no connection. You either go all the way south to, I don't even know what that street is, Boundary Lane or Longfellow, or to Marine to cross up and over to get to east of Sepulveda. I mean, there's nothing for Sixth Street connection. And I guess in relation to that too, people are still gonna go where they're gonna go. This isn't going to, if, if, you know, the shortest distance between two points is a straight line, they're not gonna follow this. Someone living at the middle between Marine Street and, let's say, if that's Boundary, where there's no other connection there, are they really going to only go to Marine Street or Boundary to go east from there? Is that realistic?
Just as a family looks at the safe routes to school to find out which way they want their child to go, they would look at this network to find out where are you, where should my kids be going on their e-bikes.
But we have, currently, we have charos along, I think we have them along Manhattan Avenue. We have them along, I think we have them one of the lanes of Ardmore. We've got charos out there already, so we're already encouraging them to use that, which aren't necessarily on these routes. In fact, a lot of the charos that we have aren't along these routes.
Many of them are. And we wouldn't be adding charos on those routes.
Many of them aren't, though. And so are we saying those are less safe? It's a rhetorical question. I'm not asking you to answer, so I'll leave it at that. Thank you, Your Honor.
All right. Councilmember Haworth?
So yeah, I guess I, I forget which discussion it was the last time, and we talked about families ride through neighborhoods, like with, or, you know, or suggest to their kids, you know, ride through the neighborhood. You know, you don't go down Sepul, Manhattan Beach Boulevard, you know, go down Second or find another way. And I guess, I, I see this as, you know, something that, well, this is a comment, I guess. I guess to your point, what I heard you say is we're gonna be adding more charos to support this network. This would be maybe on our website, so parents, is that correct?
Yes, that would be correct.
Okay. It's I, I'll, I'll wait for comments. I, I have comments, but that's not, I realize it's not questions. I realize it's not questions.
Anybody else? Not you? Anybody, anybody else?
I, I do have just a follow-up. Follow-up to a response that was asked by Mayor Port Tim Franklin. And that is, to the extent that there is a desire to have greater connectivity to the beach, because to the extent, this is part of a larger regional network, where are people from outside the city gonna want to come? And maybe they are looking for where is a safe passage, to the extent they're looking. And that's a big, open question that I think Councilmember Napolitano is getting at. You indicated that this route could be fine-tuned, so there will be an opportunity to come up with potentially additional ways for the, have greater connectivity with our beach, where people from outside the city that might be using this network region-wise would want to go, correct?
That's correct. And that's why we asked that it be part of the wayfinding plan program and not, not its own program or not its own signs style. Okay.
I'll wrap up here, Eric, then we'll go to public comment. So those of you wondering what South Bay Cog means, we're all used to government acronyms. South Bay Council of Governments. So that's what it is. Everybody has one rep or two. Councilmember Leser is our, I guess, our main rep. Councilmember Paul Tano is our second?
No, I think.
Or Joe. Sorry, I may have broken, I read both of you guys.
Or no.
That's important. So one last question before we go public comment. So you mentioned it goes to Metro Board approval September 2023. If and when they approve it back then, you and David would know, how long for it to actually start at beach? When would you think of that, start to implement that signage?
So funds became, become available, and then we have to ask for appropriation back to here, to City Council for that. The timeline, and David could help me out with this, is beginning of 2024?
Come on, David, give us, that's it.
Quick answer is we can kind of develop it on your own schedule. Our, our goal is for this first beach corridor to kind of roll out approximately around the same time. But if you feel like you need to do a little bit more route refinement or see if there's other destinations that need to be included, that's totally fine.
Please don't ask that question, David. See, here, there are comments from engineer, kind of daughter in the public works. We're trying to have expectations, you demand them here, or they'll think it's gonna happen tomorrow?
I, I would say, so Metro usually takes three to four months to get a funding agreement put together. So I would say it'd probably be January before you're, you've got a legal document that gives you, grants you those funds. And then you can begin through the, the design process and that sort of thing. And so, yeah, I, I would say window is realistically mid to late 2024. By the time you start to see signs roll out.
I'll take the over in '25, and it sounds good. Thank you, David, appreciate that. Mayor Tim Franklin, you're up, and then Councilmember Paul Tano.
Yeah, I'm so sorry. I have a question. I forgot to ask it. So if we can go to
I can't read the page either.
Yeah, the slide, page 580. It's the one with the
If you can describe it, I can pull it up.
The purple map?
Well, if you go, so it's the next one after the purple map. There we go. So there's icons down on the signs on the right. And I can see it looks like a bike and a golf cart, a scooter, and an electric plug. What does an electric plug mean?
So those are for the e-transportation, whether it's an e-bike, an NEV, or, yeah, or an e-scooter.
Okay.
And a plug.
For charger.
Yeah, I thought it was for charging.
And whatever happens in the future.
Yeah, I thought it was for charging stations. Okay. Now scooters, aren't we geofenced with rental?
We have a moratorium against rental scooters in our city, so we do not have, it's entirely geofenced.
It's a prohibition.
It's prohibition. Yeah. So we're entirely, the entire city is geofenced against that.
Okay. Is, can that, that be removed? I know, I know we have private ones, but
Private ones are not affected by the geofencing.
No, I understand that. But, you know, so imagine somebody is staying at a hotel east of us, and they rent, you know, in Hawthorne, a scooter, and they say, I want to go to the beach. And they're saying, oh, these, oh, I can use my scooter here. And then they get, I don't know how far in, and then the geofencing kicks in, and now they're stuck. So
At this time, we do not allow them in the city.
Don't look at me.
The, the sign?
Rental scooters are not allowed in the city.
Right, but, but they don't know that necessarily, when, when they're renting it. So what I'm saying is, can we customize that? Can we remove that scooter emblem?
Well, we have private scooters in the city that would let, would use the network.
Right.
We, we probably have 10,000, well, maybe 5,000 private scooters in the city.
You think we have 5,000 private scooters? I haven't, I haven't seen too many of them. And then the, okay, so, all right, so we can't modify that?
Not really.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Councilmember Paul Tano?
Oh, wait for comments.
All right. Anybody else have questions? Thank you, Eric. David, stand by, I'm sure we'll have a few questions. Public comment?
Can we get you a microphone? Why don't, why don't you sit down here?
This is the last item, Jim.
This is it. This is my last comment. Honorable mayor, City Council. I was listening, and I, I can't, I can't see why we need this program. We want less signs. We have a small community, we're four square miles. We already have those, I don't know what you called them, the signs on the street, which are kind of annoying. I didn't like them when they were put in. Sorry, personal opinion. Just because it makes things look messy in less small town. I, I think it was, in all due respect, the presentation was lovely. I just, I just, as I was listening, like, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna ride, I ride my bike everywhere. So if I know where to go, I know where I want to go. We have the school program with the kids, the parents are gonna help them figure out the routes. I feel like it's already said and done. Maybe we should focus our energies on education. Use more, use your bicycles, use your e-bikes, use your scooters. Yeah, I didn't, I just didn't see any further benefit. And when I heard about the signs, that really just kind of got to me. So, thanks.
Thank you. Our next speaker? How about Zoom, Martha? Closed public comment. Councilmember Paul Tano?
Thank you, Your Honor. You know, I don't get this at all, and I'll tell you, the cog just can't seem to resist a grant, and they should. This is really, does nothing except attempt to justify a program that isn't necessary. It's a solution looking for a problem. I can't come up with enough cliches for this. People will go where they want to go. We've done our best, and we can continue to put out charos, bike route signs and everything else. The same people use the bike routes, the charos are going to be these users as well. But as far as, as golf carts and things like that go, people are gonna go where they want to go. They're not gonna be following these routes. It's just gonna be a waste of time and space and money that we're taking that could put to better things. But we're not going to be solving any problem with this. We've got safe routes to schools. We've got charos already. We're just gonna be cluttering up our signage that we just approved, that we said we want to declutter. You didn't even want to put the, the block numbers on because that clutters up the sign. This is gonna be additional clutter in that, and then we are gonna put additional signs up, and it would be at a lower height than other signs. And it's just not necessary. The goals of sustainability, great. This doesn't do anything for that. Goals of mobility, great. This doesn't do anything about safety, great, doesn't do anything for that. They're still gonna be sharing the road with cars, they're still gonna be sharing the road with others. You're gonna have e-bikes, you're gonna have scooters, you're gonna have the golf carts, which, again, those don't necessarily mix well together either. But they're gonna go where they want to go. They're not gonna follow these routes. They know where they want to go. Us putting it out there, we can do our best by saying, this is a, a nice route to go. Again, already with the charos that we have, additional signage, additional cost, additional studies, additional consultants, those are necessary in putting together this whole program. It is unnecessary. We're, adopting it, to me, just justifies a grant that shouldn't have been applied for in the first place. It accomplishes less than zero. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mayor Tim Franklin?
Yes, thank you. In addition to, I, I agree with what Councilmember Napolitano says. You know, we have Google Maps, and it gives you a bike option. I mean, I've used it all over the place, not even just here, but when I'm traveling and even, you know, internationally. It's gonna show you a bike, appropriate bike path. In fact, I just did it from here to my home, and it's part of the path, ironically. 15th Street, right here, and then 17th Street, get over there, and get to, and then get to Pine, and I'm home. And then I just read something that I guess Apple Maps has really improved, and people are starting to use it now. So now you have two options. You have Apple Maps, you've got Google Maps, and then you've probably got way So now you have two options. You have Apple Maps, you've got Google Maps, and then you've probably got Waze and things like that. But they have bicycle options and they're pretty good in terms of putting you on bike safe routes. I did mention earlier that I've seen what we all want. And it's that middle school surf PE class. Nothing annoyed me more being down at the pier early in the past and there'd just be lines of SUVs up letting off the kids, you know, with their surfboards and things like that. Some of them would wait and they're in their car. It's a cold morning. They're idling, things like that. Or they go ahead, have to come back and pick up the kids, okay? SUVs out the ying yang. And now you go down there 6:15 in the morning when school's in and you'll see there's whole racks of e-bikes. And one time I went down and the instructor was talking to the class. I just said, hey, would you mind if I just talked to the kids about e-bikes and e-bike safety? Absolutely. Come on in. Kids were really inquisitive. I would say 90% of them were doing the right thing. You know, in terms of their helmets and things like that. So people will do it themselves. They will find the route. We got to hand it to parents, you know, they're involved here. They will find the safe way. Like most of you, you know, we, as families, went to the specific street lifeguard station, 18th Street for our place, you know, for our. And then when the kids got to be teenagers and were riding their bikes, we showed them the ways to go down there, to get there safely, so they can go ahead and do it on their own. That's what people coming into the city will want to do. If there's a grant to be had, we could certainly use some money for e-bike safety programs and helping, you know, maybe helping other cities or maybe coming up with a regional approach. What we've done is we've reached out to the other adjacent cities, El Segundo, Hermosa Beach, Redondo Beach, and, you know, share, you know, the resources of e-bike safety so and rules, knowing the rules of the road so that there'd be like a unified. You get on that Marvin Browde bicycle path and bike path and you know what you're doing. You're going to get the same answers all up and down. You could even take it further north to Santa Monica and, you know, just go all the way, you know, through Redondo to Torrance Beach. That would be something that's worthwhile. That would be a unified message. We, in fact, you know, went to our local bike shops and we gave the materials that we use to educate the kids, that kind of thing. You know, getting some state legislatures to talk to the bike manufacturers and say, these, you know, we're going to ban these if they're too dangerous. So help us here. Help us with the, you know, help us take care of the kids. So that kind of thing, I think, would be a good use of the money. And again, you know, the sign clutter, we just don't need to add to it. But I love turtles, so. That's nice.
Are you good?
Yep, thanks.
Councilor Lesser?
To the extent I want to speak in favor of this program, I want to hearken back to essentially five years ago when I was on the COG as the delegate at that time too. And this was presented as an initial concept. And part of what was appealing of the concept at that time was this was proposed as a network throughout our region to facilitate individuals purchasing and knowing where to go with their slow moving vehicles. Because we can't take a slow moving vehicle on Spalvada. You can't take it on Manhattan Beach Boulevard. And to the extent we wanted greater connectivity, there were certain routes consistent with our bike routes that we developed that this program thought should be promoted. Because not everyone has their cell phone. Not everyone uses the navigation software that most of us do now. Not everyone does. Also, in that study, there was, as I recall, because this is now harking back to a number of years ago, there were metrics about the number of trips that individuals take that are very close to their homes. And as a result, the idea was to try and promote those types of journeys in a safe way. I don't think I'm doing this justice, but that was some of the original rationale. I think this route needs to be fine tuned, as was indicated by our traffic engineer. I think perhaps the number of routes should be reduced so that it's interconnected with our region. So I would propose, or I'm trying to see if there might be any agreement, and maybe there won't be with among all members, some way that we don't kill the program and vote it down. But we certainly defer final action on it until we can see, one, how the pilot is going in El Segundo. What does that look like? We can identify perhaps a major corridor to get people to the beach, which was indicated as something of concern to Mayor Pretend Franklin, with which I agree to the extent that that's one of the goals. And see how this evolves as a regional path. But not just, as I agree with Councilmember Napolitano, most of those using slow moving vehicles are going to be in their homes all throughout our city. It's not a large city and they're going to know what routes already to take. But the underlying fundamentals of trying to set up a regional transportation network for slow moving vehicles that was safe, I was in support of that and I would be in support of that with some fine tuning.
Thank you, sir. Councilor Horwath?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have a question for a staff member. Is there something that by doing this, by putting these signs up, creating this route and getting the grant, but is there something else that we're trying to do as well that we would miss out on because we wouldn't get the grant money? Is there something else we're also trying to achieve in this? You know, is there something that behind all this? Because sometimes there's like, oh, we're doing it, doing this, but we're actually getting this other benefit as well that's going to be paid for?
Well, to the extent that some of our wayfinding signs that would be all going up anyway would be funded by this project because it happens to have a turtle on it, that would be one benefit. To the extent that we don't want to add any more sign clutter, in that sense, perhaps there is a creative way to add the local travel network signage onto a street name sign or onto a normal sign that would be there anyway. The benefit is to the subregion, in essence, because we're connecting the different various communities together. And so that's.
That piece I understand. I just like.
Losing the grant or not acting on the grant right now just delays things.
Okay. All right. Thank you. So, I mean, I do think that there's something to be said for, you know, we discussed in the prior conversation, trying to declutter with signage as much as possible. And now we would be adding signs on top. And I do think that people use their phones. And I'm fine with that. And I actually have a problem. I mean, I think that we need to encourage and educate people about how easy it is to go around Manhattan Beach on your bike and not use, you know, Manhattan Beach Boulevard. I do want us to be able to do that. And I don't think that any of us are saying that we're turning away from encouraging more bicycles, e-bikes, golf carts, what have you. So I don't think we're saying that. But I also, I want to say that sheros, I voted for sheros back in the day. I think, and there's new, there's a lot of new studies out, I believe, that say that they're not quite as safe as we originally thought. And that they don't make drivers behave better and they give cyclists a false sense of safety. So I also am leaning against this because I don't know that I want more sheros. I want to hear more about that, not tonight. But so, you know, if there's some way I, so, so I'm trying to kind of correct that problem and actually think of different ways to go forward with all of that. Maybe I'm wrong. It's happened before, not often. But then also with the council, Mayor Pretend Franklin's idea about getting grant money for e-bike safety training, you know, I know that it's not included in this, but that's something to think about. Because it's something, you know, as we keep going, want to do more and more of that. So I don't think I am going to support, I was leaning towards supporting it because I do understand the importance of connecting maybe to the greater region, although this is sort of built as neighborhood to neighborhood, like for all of us. But I think that we can get ourselves to and from places in our neighborhood without this. So I'm not inclined to support.
Thank you. I'll wrap up here, Eric, then we'll go from there. I believe at the foremost of our minds, we all focus on e-bike safety. That's the newest e-bike safety. With the misstep Sacramento made, for lack of a nicer word, the misstep of allowing anyone of any age to ride a e-bike in our city, anywhere in the state, is astoundingly, not surprisingly for Sacramento, till they fix the problem that we discussed asking legislators, both Mayor Succi and Allen, to sponsor a bill to knock that down to a reasonable age with helmets statewide. Hasn't happened yet, but things are slowing. They're all on summer break. I get it. Till that happens, our sole focus can't be on e-bike safety. If you look at the sign that David you made, it's got bicycles, golf carts, scooters slash e-bike, got through the last one, looks like a plug in, and then walking. I don't know why people need a sign for walking, but I get it. It's not just e-bike safety. It's education. We started with wayfinding 2010. Eric was here. We were trying to get that stuff done back then. So content education, 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 it sounds good. Until you see it and enforce it, it's just talking. It's just, in this case, signage. And the only bright point in this conversation I thought Amy and David brought up was that if you incorporate and saving, telling money to incorporate our future wayfinding signs with using David's turtle on this and maybe tie it in and they knock down our costs, good for us. But the idea of a second signing added to it goes against our own discussions of less clutter citywide. And Eric's heard this before for years. But education is part of it. Whether you put it like I talked about at the bat, on the app, that, hey, no e-bikes with helmet, or Mayor Frank is going to chase you down. All those things are going to be on there. I'm not against the idea of the plan. I'd rather hear back what your streamlined idea would be. You've heard our concerns and we need to bring it forward without, A, more clutter, B, it has to make sense for us. Yes, we want to be a team player at the rest of the COG. I agree. Not at the expense of my own city, or our own city. There's got to be something to look at. If not, come back and say, look, we can't do this the way you want to do it. They want their own separate signage, then we just say, thanks, but no thanks. So I'll stop there and let my colleagues pick up. Councilor Horwath first.
You said, I just want to kind of comment on something you said, which was, if you could put on the app, yeah, what if we develop the program? So instead of having, in order to qualify for the grant, instead of putting the signs up, turtles up all over our town, I like turtles too. We put it, we have an app, you know, and it's the safe, it's a safe, it's a local travel network app. So now you're, you know, you're doing all the same thing. You've mapped out a route. You've got little icons on this app and it's not on our street signs. Would that be a potential for getting a grant without cluttering up our streets?
So let me, let me do this. I have heard from everyone and I take everything to heart. I think there's some good elements about the local travel network that could be moved forward. Not necessarily the signs and the sheros in this case. Maybe we wait for El Segundo to do their pilot project or some other city. I think there are elements of the local travel network that we could support. The first being an app based type of network where it's virtual. It's not, it's not on the streets. A second one is the education and the safety portions of the local travel network effort. Supporting our other subregions in establishing their network and making connections that way. Maybe there is some potential for our city to participate with grant funding to help support that. I'll talk to our South Bay representatives for that. If that's the case, then you could make a motion to say that you would support in concept the local travel network and would support the non-sign, non-markings portions of it and for staff to see if there's funding, funding application grant funds for that.
Thank you. Good idea. Councilor Paltono?
If council wants to support a virtual network that's accessed through website, then no one will use, that's fine with me.
So maybe the idea, I'm surprised the COG reps here. Tim Franklin, you go first, then I'll come back.
That's fine.
So, I mean, let's take a look this past year of what actually we've been faced. So we, Eric Lee, did we like double the number of?
You want him to come down and speak?
No, he can just.
I mean, they have to hear him.
Oh, okay. But I can say his answer was yes, but that's all right. So Eric Lee, I mean, did we essentially double the number of bike racks that we put in the city between, you know, like last summer we went through and?
Yeah, I think between last summer and the summer before, we doubled that about.
And would you say there's still a need for that? Would that enhance once people get here that they have a place to lock their bike?
Yeah, we continue to have needs for bike racks. I think, you know, part of our problem is, is that public right of way space is narrow and tight. And so we can't deploy them everywhere.
Okay. And there's other solutions for that out there. I remember I saw something by the REI where they had like a steel loop, you know, embedded in the pavement. So you didn't have a big rack and all you need to do is go by that embedded steel.
Yeah, it's an innovative solution. Our staff evaluated that specifically and not pursuing that for the trip hazard aspect of it.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Well, but there's a way. I mean, because that's what people are concerned with, right? I mean, they're concerned, they want to be near their bike because of the bike thefts that we've been having.
Yeah, I do hear that there are concerns about bike thefts. I'm not, I don't really know the magnitude of that. But certainly having good quality racks makes sense.
Okay, great. All right, going back to Eric number two. So could we, could we make part of that, what you were talking about, to maybe repurpose some of those funds for those things that, those ancillary items that help promote e-bike usage?
I will, I will ask to see if that could be eligible for Measure M funds. Say, for instance, like at a destination, this would be bike racks or facilities.
Remember, we were talking about bike corrals?
Bike corrals that would support the local travel network. And maybe there's a connection that way. But I don't know the actual answer until we could dig deeper into the grant funds.
Okay, great.
Councilor Lesser, then I'll wrap up.
I have a motion, but I wanted to refer to you, Mr. Mayor, if you have other comments.
The only comment I'd say is that, Eric, you would agree, you've seen, we've all seen it explode here. We're not just a local network. We're a worldwide famous destination people. It's not just we're servicing our own residents or the South Bay community. You mentioned earlier that someone, or some talked about someone from Paris, France, visiting here and using the e-bikes, right? So the idea that we're just protecting our own backyard is wrong. If you go anywhere on the weekend here, the creamery, Jill, on the weekends, every foreign language you could think of is being discussed in that line. If you sit in line in the creamery on the weekend, you hear a language of the world being discussed. We're not just our own back, we're an island here. So the idea we're protecting it for ourselves is to go out the window. Some of this, I like Amy's idea too, is that we need to look outside our own backyard and realize people coming to visit here don't know our systems, don't know. So maybe that virtual turtle that Amy's talking about, that maybe our QR code on the turtle, whatever language they use, they can see it, understand what we're talking about. If not, you know, no harm, no foul. If it's attached to our wayfinding signs, and I like Joe's idea about the bike stands that we can use, you know, David's money for and save our own money.
It's all David's money.
I like that part that we can incorporate that, that money, the grant money into something we're doing already and drop down our costs. I think it's a good idea. Whether we continue the item, Councilor Lesser, bring it back once these two can bring an idea that we can use forward, up to you.
Well, I was going to pick up on what the city traffic engineer suggested with what I would call a minimalist motion with some, with some concerns and some directions to research and contingencies, essentially. So as I understand it, at a minimum, we would support the network in concept as a regional connectivity. But at this point, there is not support for signage or for sheros. And there's direction to review how we can use the funds potentially with other purposes that we have for our city, including bike safety. And was there an element that I've missed here? It would have to come back here. We'd have to work on the route. We have to make sure it really works for our city.
Her idea, the app idea, design with the app, having influence on the app, I think is a great idea.
Isn't the app just a mirror of the bike route on Google Maps?
I'm not sure.
Well, my question about it would be.
Anyone from another country would be having their cell phone.
I mean, I was just trying to figure out, is there a way to achieve, like, I don't know, like, maybe. But we need to ask that. Maybe we just need to ask that.
And maybe that app.
If we vote Eric tonight, does it lock us in to anything? Are we just saying we support the concept, bring it back when you refine it?
The simple answer is it does not lock you into anything in particular. The. The, the decision we'd like to have tonight is whether or not we want to apply for some grant funds for something along those lines. This is our window right now, and it's closing for this year.
And you bring back information to us that things we talked about allow us to refine that to fit our unique situation.
We can refine that to fit our situation.
Okay.
And that's what I would emphasize in my motion. This has to come back because we're not going to give a carte blanche, open-ended approval for the network at this point and for the funding that we might otherwise be eligible for until we have a little bit more clarity as to what it is we're actually asking for. So that would be my motion, as mumbled as it is.
How much grant money are we talking about here?
The earmark or the, is up to $1.2 million.
And it was $1 million to reestablish a intra-Manhattan Beach transportation system, right? The downtown are expanded through, as a
Right.
As a rideshare app. I mean, that's what people want.
That's what people want.
They don't want this.
I agree with you.
But you can look at your options. Remember, all you just said, no commitment, open-ended, we look at all the options, if you don't like it, the end of it, come back and say no. Until we know the answer, what they'll say no to, we're saying no to the option. We haven't even seen the option yet. So your motion is there, and I'll make the second for it so I can see what I want to do. Councilor Horwath?
Thank you. Well, could part, okay, could part of the direction, could staff find out if we, we could use the grant money to do the app for the, that type of, you know?
A micro-rideshare.
Micro-rideshare, sorry. Because, because that, that also could be a regional connector, that could be, you know, get people downtown, that could, that may be, yeah, it's like first mile, last mile. Ooh, I threw that out there. I really think that that would be a much more useful and amazing thing.
So to help answer your question, I don't know the actual answer between changing it from an LTN to something other than that, David might be able to help answer that.
Well, if you
It would also be needed on a yearly basis, though.
Sure, but if we could, if we could do the, like, the pilot, do the work.
I agree. We've talked about this before, and they have a micro-mobility project, pilot project out there. They just didn't choose us. I believe they chose Santa Monica, but we've been talking about that for the last five years.
Yep.
And they should choose Manhattan Beach for that.
They should, and we, but this could be an opportunity for us to do, find out the necessary, I mean, there's a lot of things that have to be figured out, you know, if you put it next to transportation corridors, is there a place to, you know, for employee, it could solve the parking problem for downtown employees. It could do all of that. So, and that would be first mile, last mile, that could be a lot, so that money could be seed money to do all that initial stuff, and it may not, may not be our cost going forward. So that would be the friendly amendment.
You know what? We don't want to know till we ask, right? Let's find out the answer. Take a look at, all we're asking for tonight is to get onto the look and bring it back to the ID and see what happens.
I accept the friendly amendment.
I guess the question is, does that need a motion or is this direction to bring back information?
City Attorney Barrett, do we need an actual motion or directions to staff?
Directions good enough.
All right. Then I
As long as it's clear.
As long as it's clear.
My understanding is that we would bring back new ideas to you with regard to
How the money, how a grant
How we could apply for grant money for
Can I just ask one quick question?
Yes.
Of either you, Eric, or Mr. Legere, and that is, is there a need for all the cog cities to sign up at a certain time to facilitate the cog going for this?
So there was
Grant money.
One city that did not choose to, is that correct? Yeah, I'm going to let David answer this.
I just want to make sure that this, is this time sensitive? Are you looking for a conceptual vote subject to the direction where we have a lot of open-ended questions? Or can we just, should I just go ahead and withdraw the motion and have these questions come back, and then we can decide how to proceed?
Sure. So, so the Beach Cities Corridor was El Segundo, Manhattan, Hermosa, Redondo. El Segundo, Redondo submitted applications to implement. Hermosa decided to hold off because they were going through a similar process as you guys about signage and that sort of stuff. So they've refined their network, their route selection, but decided to wait until next year to see if they're in a position to apply for the implementation funds. So if the council does not authorize staff to submit the application tonight, you would have to wait until next, this time next year to do that. The application, I'd start working with staff probably January of '24. The cog board would approve it springtime, and then the metro board would approve it September of 2024. Yeah.
All right. Thank you for that. That's helpful.
With that, I would say to folks, this is a chance to get part of your gas tax money back that we're all paying for, nobody taxes back to service our community, and all we're saying is, look at the options out there. Whatever Eric and David bring back, maybe you like some of them, maybe we like all of them, but with no commitment, except we're moving forward and looking at the ideas of concept. Let's take a vote, and we'll go on from there.
Okay.
So without, no, I'm sorry, no vote needed, you said, just direction?
But once again, back to the funding, so Hermosa, it's another year from now. If this comes back next month, does the city still have to wait a year?
It's a matter of timing for us, David.
Yeah, I think, I think, understanding the kind of magnitude of what you guys are asking, I don't know that we could put together a refined scope that you would be supportive of in time for the metro board to do their evalu, metro staff to do their evaluation and eligibility review, and then get it to their board in time for this year.
That said, I reaffirm my second to your motion, Councilor Lesser, and with no other comments, we'll do a roll call vote.
And that includes the environmental determination?
Yes, it includes environmental determination as well.
Well, can you restate the motion? Yeah, I just want the motion
Restate the motion.
I mean
Go ahead, David.
Go ahead.
Supportive in concept of a regional low travel, local travel network, subject to answers to a number of questions that we have directed. The questions, the direction includes no signage at this point, no sharrows, rerouting or fine-tuning the route itself, questions about application of the grant funds to other local purposes.
Transportation purposes.
What I missed, and transportation purposes, specifically transportation.
And the app, right? We talked about
And the app.
But whether it's a motion or direction, we just heard that they're not going to be able to come back in time to adjust things for the metro board, which means actually there's, you know, we should have considered this a month or two months ago. But whether it's a vote or a direction, they're not going to be able to do it, right?
Clarification, David, what that actually means. I know what metro board means, but explain how the timing works on our motion and/or vote tonight.
Okay, so the metro board will be acting in September. Their committee process is usually about a whole month, so they would want their staff reports and all that kind of stuff finalized in the next few weeks. What I might recommend is if you were supportive of staff refining the routes, you could, you could do that design element of the project and apply for funds, and then if you choose to apply for implementation funds, whether or not that's a virtual one or something else, we could do that after the design has been completed. So you could, you could secure funds to finalize your route selection throughout the city if you so chose.
Again, clarification, we vote, or by the, either way, vote or direction, we're not committed to actually doing anything past that point, because you know what? Thank you for your offer of a man too, we're not going to take it.
So you could apply for a portion of those funds to do the design process of this, this is what the network would look like in our city, and then next year, we could say we would want to implement it this way, whether it would be potentially through a virtual app or some other
It could also be a micro thing, like we were talking about, micro-rideshare, like, if we just, after the designing the routes, so we get a little bit of money for that, we could then take it and apply next time for that money.
So this is, this is infrastructure, it's capital funds?
Right.
So it couldn't fund the operations of a service like you're talking about, but it would, it could set up the routes?
Okay.
It could set up, we've never applied for an app before, but I would say that we could make that argument that a virtual app
That's the problem, that's what we don't want, is a route-based transportation system.
Right, actually.
You need a ride, hail transportation system.
But we won't know that answer until they come back. We're not committed to doing anything past that point.
So in theory, you could design it as a route and get to the end of that process and choose to do nothing else, no harm, no foul, metro's not going to be mad or anything like that, you're not going to have to return funds or any of that process. So you could have a network design that you chose not to implement.
Understood. Thank you. Any more questions, anybody? We're good? All right, voting screens up. Pick your choice.
Motion passes four to one.
Thank you, Eric. Thank you, David. Thank you, Tilly. Appreciate it. Well done. Education, education. Here we go. All right, next item, item L. City council requests and reports, AV 1234 reports. Anybody travel anywhere? No? I'm happy with the city I'm in.
I've traveled neighborhood to neighborhood.
Uh, let's see.
I went to Hermosa.
Consider request by Councilman Napolitano, Mayor Protam Franklin, to send a letter requesting a change in the government code to allow cities to prosecute state misdemeanors when a county district attorney declines to prosecute. City Manager Mo.
Yes, this was, as you said, a request from council, and normally this would be for the third vote to move forward. If there is a third vote, that will
Third.
All right, staff will draft a letter and send it on council's behalf.
Great. Thank you. That's all on that item. Item M, future agenda items. Maybe I'll go first. Anyone? Councilor Lesser? Horwath?
Pink signs. I want pink signs on a future agenda.
On your street.
City Manager Mo, City Attorney Barrett, has anyone asked, I thought Councilman Napolitano asked this question, I didn't see it anywhere in our write-up or notes. Did we ask in a letter formally for something Mayor Succi and Senator Ben Allen to propose a bill on e-bike safety, limiting, raising the age from four to at least 16 years old? Did we not ask that letter?
Require a license.
No, I don't, I don't believe we've had any
I'll make that an item myself.
Same, second.
So that we want to make it clear that we're looking for aids of e-bike riders, a license, get some more money, I'm sure
Enforcement.
I love that. License, testing, helmet requirement mandatory, cities can impound vehicles from first citation onwards, all of that, to vote Senator Ben Allen's office and Senator Almer Succi's office, have them sponsor that bill, then notify ICA, Cal City, State League to jump on behind us.
Yep.
Maybe I have thoughts to you. You mentioned it, I thought you were saying bring it up.
I'll take credit for it.
So that's step one.
We need three votes.
Just replace down the next agenda, and then if there's three, we'll send a letter.
Probably the third.
I did the second already, but we already got
Since it's not on the agenda, so we didn't give it an opportunity for the public to speak on it.
Got it. It's on there now for next time. City Manager report.
Nothing tonight. Aloha.
Aloha. City Attorney report?
Aloha.
Aloha, mahalo, appreciate that. Nothing informational. And folks, tonight, this is the worst job of being, duty of the mayor, is another adjournment for a longtime resident, most of you know, and this resident played at my engagement party, Patrick Pat Dietz. Most of you know him and his brother John, and probably have your kids taken lessons there, but I want to adjourn tonight to council media memory of Pat Dietz, lifelong president of Manhattan Beach. Pat and his brother John started Dietz Brothers Music over 40 years ago and are true icons in our community. Over the years, Pat interacted with and taught thousands of people music and performed in various bands many times. But he was much more than a musician and guitar teacher. He was a great friend and mentored everyone he knew. Recently, he lost his life in a tragic act, sorry, tragic accident. He was walking out of a store in Del Amo Mall with his grandson, and the driver lost control of his car, hit other cars, and continued on. Pat was not in the path of the out-of-control car, but his grandson was. Pat jumped in front of the car to push his grandson out of harm's way. He lost his life saving his grandson's life. Knowing Pat, he would have done this for any of us.